It is August the first at 5:02. I want to go ahead and get this meeting to order. We'll go ahead and call. If we have the City Secretary, call room, please.
Mitchell? Tobias?
Present.
Heiser?
Present.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
Okay, it looks like we have a quorum. Total, we have six present. At this next, we will have citizens comments period. Citizen comments, City Council welcomes comments from citizens early in the agenda with those wishing to speak to sign up. Do we have anybody for citizens comment? Looks like we don't. I'll go ahead and close that. Okay, next up, we have executive session.
Sorry. Yeah, I'll give it right back. All right, thank you. Pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation, settlement agreement, or to seek the advice of the city attorney and attorneys concerning legal issues pursuant to Section 551.071 Texas Government Code and Section 1.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct; Sunfield Municipal Utility District, the Development Agreement Establishing Development Standards for the Waterfront and Marketplace Development; possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase of real property for public purpose; purchase of property for city facilities and public purposes; property acquisition, button, and layman; personnel matters pursuant to Section 551.074; convening into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city; Project Hot Pursuit, Project Facelift, Project Opal Ranch, Project Two Step, Project Lion King, Project Sahara, and Project China Pep.
We are now in the executive.
I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned. Good evening. The time is 7:02 PM. It is Tuesday, August the first, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled City Council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we have a roll call vote this evening, I'm going to take a moment of privilege. I think many of the folks on council and obviously quite a few folks in our community learned of the untimely passing of one of the former mayors of the city of Kyle, Missandra Tenorio. Ms. Tenorio was the mayor of Kyle from April of 1986 to May of 1989. She has been very involved in the community throughout her entire life, and obviously her family and friends are mourning her loss. And I would like to take this moment to have a moment of silence and with the understanding that we just learned of this passing, and so there will be potentially a proclamation to come that we will work on. But for now, I'd like for us to take a moment of silence in remembering of her and her family. All right, thank you. Thank you all very much. Can the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw? Parsley?
Here.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for City Council's special meetings for July 12th, regular special meeting of July 18th, and the regular meeting for the same date, July 18th, 2023.
Our motion by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve the minutes is their discussion on the motion. Halls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the City Secretary. We do have quite a few folks who are here to speak, and so we are going to hold pretty close to the three-minute time limit. First up is Anna Bowling.
I'm first. Hi, I'm Anna Martinez Bowling. I just wanted, I hadn't had a chance to come and thank council for allowing me to put my artwork up in the halls of City Hall. I really appreciated it. And as a result, I have a little, here's a plug, at the Wake the Dead Coffee House in San Marcos, they have a little art exhibit as well, and I put that up today. So I really appreciate that, and I appreciate all the work that the Arts Commission, Arts and Cultural Commission is doing. I did interview for the position. Unfortunately, I had to withdraw my application due to personal problems, but, well, they weren't problems, just issues. But I did want to take an opportunity to thank all of you for allowing me to do this, and I want to stay involved in the arts and culture, cultural growth in Kyle. And I did, I did listen before I interviewed, I did listen to some of the recordings of the meetings, City Council as well as Arts Commission, and there seemed to be a little disconnect. So I'm just hoping that that's not a problem and that, that the council and the commission can work well together. Again, thank you so much, and I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, Ms. Evangeline Chapa.
Thank you for allowing me this time, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name's Evangeline Chapa, and I know that y'all are in cloud nine after the ribbon cutting of this, the safety center. But I would like to inform people of how the police department got to the present time. And most of you weren't here. The only one probably at the time was the mayor and some staff members. And in 2019, the city was having several meetings to discuss downtown Kyle. The topics were development, design, parking, and zoning. It was at that one of these meetings that the, that Mayor Mitchell informed, and former city manager, and some former council members, had a plan to move the city hall to uptown Kyle. The land and the building design were ready to go, and this building would be the home of the police department where we are now. The majority of the citizens felt that the police department deserved in the new building. And they had been already in four different locations, and this location was not the best place for them to be because if there was an emergency on the east side of I-35, it would not be easy for them to get out. So then the city agreed, okay, the police department, go ahead, let's have the plan. And Chief Burnett had gone to visit several cities with the plans that they had in their towns. I remember a design that was presented that was drawn by Texas A&amp;M. Somehow, this plan grew, the safety center and city staff moving there. I've heard several times, even the city manager saying, the people want it. Originally, the people wanted the police department. That's, they deserved their own place. And it seems to me like it got worked in as a bundle, that's being bundled now for different things, and this bundle, the city got to move to uptown Kyle. Thank you for listening to me.
All right, next up, Jack Peterson.
Good evening, council. My name is Jack Peterson. I'm representative for FM 158 Land. I'd like to pass out our latest conceptual plans for Yarrington Development. We noticed tonight that you're planning to approve Limestone Creek's Phase One Streets Water, Wastewater, and Drainage Improvements for Agenda Item Number 12. I'm sure that many of you are aware of the ongoing discussions surrounding the drainage improvements for Limestone Creek, but for the new members and staff, we'd like to give you an update. Last year and September, we submitted a cease and desist letter after discovering that the previous city manager made an agreement with the developers of Limestone Creek and Waterstone to divert stormwater onto our property without our permission. We did a complete engineering analysis using LiDAR and proved that 97% of the stormwater coming off Limestone Creek's development continues east through Waterstone's development, and only 3% comes of our property. Since our discovery, we have had several meetings with their engineers to work through this problem. We feel that we are somewhat close to an agreement with them, but we still have not heard if they will meet our demands. If we are unable to secure an agreement with them, then we hope that we can figure out another solution that does not involve damaging FM 158's property by diverting stormwater to it. As you can see from the map that I passed out of our conceptual drawing of the development, we do not have room for their water. So tonight, we are asking council to postpone Agenda Item Number 12 until we can submit a written agreement to the city that shows what Limestone Creek is actually, what they have planned to do with their drainage once Go Fourth Road is built. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, Casey Ford.
My name's Casey. I wanted to express my experience with reporting animal welfare concerns to the Kyle Animal Control as an example of why Agenda Item 21 is critically important. Over the last month, I have reported concerns to animal control multiple times. I wanted to focus on my experience on July 13th, when it was 102 during the call and a high of 105. A dog was tethered outside without water or adequate shade. During the call, I expressed concerns that there was not water. The animal control officer argued that maybe I could not see the water. I repeatedly had to explain that I could see the bowls were flipped over. I expressed concerns about the lack of shade. She argued that the dog had shade cloth, even though she wasn't there, and it clearly did not. I expressed concerns about it being illegal to tether during a heat advisory. She repeatedly argued with me that it was legal to tether during a heat advisory. I expressed concerns over the dog not being able to move, only being able to move a few feet. She argued that the tether was legal. This is not accurate. Tangled tethers do not meet the conditions of the law. I expressed concerns about the overwhelming amount of feces the dog had to live in and the dog looking underweight. She said she would stop by to knock on his door and that it might scare him into giving the dog water. I told her that she could come to my backyard and observe the dog. She said it was an invasion of privacy for my neighbor. I was disheartened that a community member reporting an animal cruelty crime would be met with inaccurate information and indifference. After seeing the reports, I was also frustrated that they were very vague and inaccurate. Over the next week, I saw the dog provided food and water by the neighbor twice. I wholeheartedly believe that this bucket is the reason the dog is still alive. For six days, I provided the dog food and water over the fence documenting his horrible conditions. Again, I called on July 19th and expressed my concerns and provided photo documentation. The neighbor was given a warning and education. This situation was not a one-time forgetting to fill a dog's bowl, but a pattern of neglect, a crime with a victim. My experience has left me still worried about the welfare of this dog that I reported on and the welfare of other animals in Kyle. It is clear to me that Kyle Animal Control needs additional training and support. I hope you guys will hear out on Robin.
All right, thank you. Next up is Colette Resnikoff.
Good evening, Kyle, Kyle City Council and Mayor. My name's Colette, and I wanted to say firstly, I'm grateful for the amazing police work in the recent cases of the San Marcos arsonist and the child kidnapper in Kyle, and the animal serial killer in Buda. A clear link of violence towards animals has been established with frequent co-occurring violent crimes toward humans, particularly elderly abuse, domestic violence, murder, rape, arson, and sexual abuse of children. Our LEOs make our community safer and are appreciated. We cannot imagine the difficulty of this work. I've worked with the volunteer Hayes County Lost and Found Team for two years, and we typically help facilitate around three to five reunions of lost pets and their families daily. At an average of 300, roughly $300 per intake prevented, and 60 to 100 hours weekly, an estimate to quantify the contributions of Hayes County Lost and Found Teams is around $1 million a year. We've been approached regarding too many unresolved cruelty and neglect situations. The DOJ data shows that seven cruelty cases were created in all of Hayes County in 2021. We have firsthand knowledge that cases are much greater than that, and we see a need for a 24/7 county-based APO or cruelty division like that of Garland, Texas. Williamson County, at roughly two and a half times our population size, had 257 cases in the same year. A unified team under single leadership might avoid the confusion of inconsistent protocols. Regarding the canine victim on Amberwood Court, a case has been created to tie a few of the nearly dozen incidents together after pressure from the Kyle community. Live visual verification of this animal's well-being has not been confirmed with a follow-up welfare check 10 days later, after 25 months of continuous reports of emaciation, deprivation of water, food, shade, illegal shelter and tethering, lack of vetting, and a body condition score of three out of nine. The dog has been offered a home following vetting should a seizure be rightfully pursued. We've failed this poor animal miserably. The inconsistencies or the failure to release reports is being escalated to the AG's office, and the fact that the owner's identifying data is absent from the majority of incident reports is highly concerning. Please consider a Hayes County 311 Call Center for Documentation and Dispatch to meet the exponential growth of haze. A $30 million state-of-the-art shelter is slated for Hayes County. Citizens need to see an unwavering message of zero tolerance towards cruelty, neglect, abandonment, and an educational compassionate strategy when appropriate. This clear messaging to residents will help ensure future success by addressing the behaviors that are detrimental to the people and the animals of our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Anthony Davis.
Sorry, it's been a while since the last time I came up here, so I dressed in the nines. I came here because the last meeting, especially on items 10 and 11, I know there was a lot of discussion on the Arts and Cultural Commission or Board, as it kept being implied as. I don't know, semantics is a political game. But as someone who works over at the Train Depot across the street, where we have currently the paintings just outside of this room down the hallway, painting and dressed and everything. I know that entire thing couldn't have been easily formulated by anything like the pard, considering on how often they're able to do events. But also, you can't really do that without that Train Depot right out front. This is an entire city that is founded by lots of culture and history. So the idea of trying to remove culture from the Arts and Cultural Commission or Board or Committee, whatever term you want to use, that really just seems to be the only difference is how those people are leaving. Then, come on, you're kind of removing half of what that entire thing was supposed to be about. You need these events with the culture in mind. You can't just have it to be putting up artwork at some places. You should be able to have a certain aura about this city. It can't just be seen as a replacement for all of these Austinites that come in here to have this excerpt while they travel and commute to and fro. You can't have it where all these Californians come in here. Kyle has a culture. It has over a century's worth of history. So you can't just easily remove the cultural aspect, especially with a couple of you people, a couple of you guys last time actually mentioned that without culture, you can't really have art. And art expands to anything. It's economics, it's sociology, it's music, it's dance, it's a bunch of other things. So trying to minimize it into just artwork is completely defeatist in the entire idea of that commission existing. So if we're trying to really preserve or actually see what Kyle is and what it's supposed to be, you kind of still need to have that cultural aspect. You need to have them going around, seeing what people are talking about, actually putting the effort and actually communicating with this community. You can't just get rid of the cultural aspect and not see something wrong with that. The other thing also that you were discussing besides that was the dialogue for peace and progress. I will admit, as someone who has served on three of those, they need to be a bit worked around. There was a couple of the ideas, especially like citizens only really need to be on here and minors that are passing it. I do not quite understand the negative idea or whatever of someone who's running for office apparently not being allowed to serve on those. Think if they're actually in the community and they are Kyle residents. There's no reason why someone who should be running for any kind of office, whether that's municipal, state, or whatever, shouldn't be allowed. They're still citizens. They're still running for and by Kyle. They are Kyle citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Robert Rizzo.
Good evening, council, Mayor. Alex V. Lowes will be joining me here today. It's with a heavy heart that I come before you this evening. As the mayor mentioned, the passing of Sandra Tenorio has really hit this community really hard. I want to give you a little background on Sandra. She was a state chair at the House Democrats for two years. She was the first Hispanic elected as mayor of the city of Kyle. Not only was she the first Hispanic, first Hispanic woman elected to mayor. She served as a PETA City Council from 2005 to 2012, seven years, seven months. She also served as the mayor pro tem there. She was on the Director of the Board of Immigration Issues Office for the Governor, State of Texas, from January of 91 to January of 95. Sandra served as a member of the Governor's Policy Council as the Director of the Board and Immigration Issues. She coordinated in all collaborations between Texas and the Mexican government on health, environmental, and transportation issues along the Texas border and for Mexican states. She also worked with an advocacy group, including the United Farm Workers and Valley Interface, to provide water and wastewater services and resources along the Texas border. There's so many more accomplishments she did in her lifetime, but like I said, this has really hit the community really, really hard, and it's been, it came by surprise. It actually took the person that called me to let me know, to inform me twice before I could believe it, because I just didn't want to believe it. She was a great person. She had infectious smiles. Her smile could just light up a room. It was, it was beautiful. And what I'm here to ask today of council is to find a way to recognize her. I really don't know what that looks like, but I know that this chamber doesn't have a name for the first Hispanic elected to mayor of the city of Kyle, maybe be a fitting tribute, but I'll let council decide what would be the best thing for the citizens. But I think Alex wanted to say some, a few words.
Mayor and council, when you look at the indelible footprints that she's put forward to show us all the way, to provide opportunities for all of us to be here, education, immigration, public health, all of those, if you look at those and those ripple effects, how many lives are here today because of her work? And I can tell you that it affected my life, affected my family's lives when it comes to immigration. So the ripple effects of someone leaving us untimely, and her presence, her authority, her education, her outreach to all people will be felt, and sometimes in some of these things we don't even know about yet, because, because of what she's done, because of her life's work to provide opportunities for people like me and you that are on those, on those seats today. So I would appreciate honoring her. Thank you for the moment of silence, but something that will honor her in an untimely manner, but also honor her for perpetuity. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Next up, Shari Boyet.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Shari Boyet. I'm the appointed Hayes County Animal Advocate for the Commissioners Court and Judge Becerra. A couple of notes. I wanted to thank the mayor and the city manager for doing the recent promotional videos for the animal shelter. As most everyone knows, the animal shelter is in an excessive capacity. And with that, we all know that we're working towards a Hayes County Pet Resource Center. I'm here tonight to be a part of support for the animal welfare item number 21, but I also wanted to just give an example of what a few of the days in my life look like. And I want to, I just want to say, I'm hot. Are y'all hot? Isn't it hot? Well, it was 103 degrees outside as I was driving in here, and I am very glad I'm not tied outside in a box or in an igloo, wishing that I would just die, because that's what some of these dogs are, as they sit deprived of basic needs. So with that, a little dramatic, but just to kind of paint the picture of what we see. So I'm just going to go through no notes. This is probably just any random week, and there are other people, those lost and found volunteers do the same thing. On Sunday, I was summoned to the Target parking lot because there were 10 dogs, big sign, free dogs. And all of this is relevant to the animal welfare enforcement. And basically, my presence here tonight is to ask Kyle to become involved now with the Hayes County Pet Resource Center, because we are, we're moving forward and it's, it's time. San Marcos can't keep this capacity up. So of these 10 dogs, there was a family, a pregnant woman. She still had two dogs. They were fighting little dogs that were tied because they couldn't get along, not because they were fighting, but they were cute little things. But they were in a desperate situation and they needed help. So my friend was there and we were able to help them on a temporary situation. Monday morning, I was sent a picture of a dog that was deceased, and I was asked, apparently, Sunday while I was at Target for help and didn't see it. So that guilt is with me. Yesterday afternoon, I was sent pictures of three puppies on Yarrington Road that one of my friends has. This is every day. So I'm just trying to build an example for y'all to see when, when people are going to come forward and speak about the statewide things. It seems a little high in law. This is a real thing that's happening around here. So again, thank you for helping this San Marcos shelter, but we need to be talking about how to transition today to the countywide programs for animal protection. Keep promoting animals on an individual basis in every way possible. Thank you for the funds for the spay neuter and keep that, too. And we do need vaccination clinics. We're seeing some distemper in the community, and we need to get ahead of that. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next up, Laura Lee Harris.
Mayor, council staff, I'm Laura Lee Harris. I'm addressing the council today on an item that raised concern for me during the 2324 budget workshop last week. And it's not parks, believe it or not. There is a line item to fund lighting on Coler's Crossing. I would disagree that this is necessary. Coler's Crossing is already a bright street from intersections and the driveways that are on that street. I drive this street regularly and have not perceived any need for more lighting. West of 1626 toward 2770, it is essentially residential. It may be that Coler's Crossing is classified, classified as a collector road, but that does not mean that it should have median lighting. I wonder if an evaluation has been done at the current level of lighting there and the number of accidents that happen at night on that road. I suspect the lighting survey would indicate that this entire area is so brightly lit that it would rank well below the cutoff for even the dark, lowest dark sky. that it would rank well below the cutoff for even the dark, lowest dark sky criteria. I'm bringing this issue forward at this time because flag stakes have been placed in the median, which would indicate the light poles are already scheduled for installation. I request that installation of additional lighting on Coler's Crossing not proceed until a need for this lighting has been adequately justified. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Kelly Arthur.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kelly Arthur and I lead the Lost and Found Pets of Hayes Group. I've been involved in scanning, reuniting, and shelter diversion of dogs for the past five years. Up until now, this included a relationship of mutual respect between myself and the Kyle Supervisor for Animal Control and her team. Two weeks ago, I was contacted by multiple people regarding a concern about a dog at 133 Amberwood Court. On 7/19, after multiple complaints, the ACO went out to the address. The dog was padlocked to a tangled up tether in complete sun with the temp being close to 100 degrees already. The only shelter was a heavy duty plastic igloo. Those shelters heat up 10 to 20 degrees hotter than the temp outside. Both food and water bowls were flipped upside down and had been for the past three days. The ACO was assured by the owner who wasn't home that his partner filled the water bowl. However, that was untrue. This was again reported and the owner then gave the ACO permission to enter the yard and provide water. The only water this dog had received in days was from the neighbor who has already spoke. In reviewing the open records for this address, complaints of neglect and abuse started over two years ago, 25 months to be exact. Six of 21, dog tied to tree in backyard yelping all day. 12 of 22, dog tied up in backyard, five days without water. Supervisor Geddes reported she made contact with the resident and the dog. She gave it a three out of a nine body condition score and noted emaciated. She advised the owner needed to have the dog evaluated by a vet as well as raise the dog's score. Also advised on shelter and tethering requirements. Geddes never returned for a follow-up. Moved to April of 23, dog is in backyard tied to a rock, no food or water present. ACO, ACO failed to reach the owner, card left at door. ACO made contact and owner claimed the dogs have food and water by the door. The dog's tether wasn't long enough to even reach the door. Six of 23, dog chained in yard in the sun, no water present. ACO made contact advising dog need shade and access to water. No follow-up to confirm if it was in compliance. Three separate reports in July, dog is tethered on a short leash in sun, no water. ACO attempted to contact, left message, no other follow-up. Dog is tethered, no water, no update from the ACO. Dog has been tethered four days, no sign of water. How is this okay? How is this legal? Not a single citation when in fact this dog could have been rightfully seized based on the ordinance that the ACOs and their supervisor are clearly not following. The only eyes on this dog since 7/19, when it was requested that the dog being brought inside, is a video sent to the ACO showing it inside, also not included in these records. Also, what's not included in these records is my call on the 19th and the ACO's response to me. All I ask for y'all is please look into this. I'm going to be sending you all an email with much more documentation. What Shari said, I know I'm past, I'll start walking, times what she gets, times 20, 20 a week. That's what I've been doing for the last five years. This is unacceptable, especially from a group that I have respected and partnered with for a very long time.
Thank you. All right, next up is Kenneth Bell.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Reverend Kenneth Bell. I'm also a past master of Prince Hall Masons. As a mason when building, we take all the stones and suit them for fit to be out, for breaking away the rough edges to make them fit our needs in building, a worthy place in our endeavors to build a strong foundation and everlasting peace and prosperity. So we say, let's keep going forward, not backwards, in the growth of this city. I also go way back with city of Kyle. I had very little, Kyle had very little to offer in those days. We had Chicken Willis, we had Bun Tons on Center Street, we had Burger King inside of Texaco, and we had Railroad Barbecue. And we had a sheriff with a green Dodge hiked up in the back with a American flag on it in Father's Day Parade. Those were the good old days in Kyle. But today, we come and say, please, let's keep going forward and let's not go backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Next up, Vanessa Westbrook.
Vanessa Westbrook, citizen of Kyle, taxpayer, voter, and community volunteer. When looking at the many eels and issues that communities face since 2020, we've had a deadly virus that discriminated against no human, or all humans rather. We saw the murder of a man by a police officer on social media. There was a winter freeze that took place that changed our way of life for a short period of time, where people were injured, they were either killed or in some instances had a very hard time for a long period of time. We are only two, we are less than 200 miles away from an elementary school where fourth graders were killed in their classroom. With all of that negativity, our community was able to set up dialogue events where our citizens could come forth and say what they felt about certain things that were going on in the community. We also were able to organize opportunities to celebrate the differences that we have here in this city. And we provided opportunities where we could show how we had so many similarities. But when you see something, you say something, isn't that what they say? I have heard, seen, and experienced elements of bigotry, prejudice, discrimination, intolerance, racism, narrow-mindedness, lack of empathy, cultural insensitivity, and narcissism from city, the city's governing body and selected staff over the past six months. It truly saddens me. The great American Barbara Jordan said, "It is a privilege to serve the people, a privilege that must be earned." And once it's earned, it is an obligation to do something good with it. So you could just imagine that on July the 18th, that I heard horrors of a narcissistic discussion of who should or would run or rule over a forum that was designed to have citizens openly voice their thoughts and opinions about current issues, about problems in our city, and about our way of life in this community. It was truly a shameful day. As many communities are highlighted in the media for their negative woes, including us, we have also had some very positive things said about us in local media, social media, various types of media, where we have celebrated each other, whether it was cultural, historical, or artistic. You have said, let us not focus on anything, just the art. Well, that's appalling. So you want to throw the cultural, artistic events into the wind and just let somebody else do it? Well, an American president said, and I quote, "If not us, then who? If not now, then when? Please think about what you are doing and how you are doing it. As citizens, we are watching." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Next up is Stephanie Murray.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Murray, formerly of the Arts and Cultural Commission, and I'm particularly concerned that the city council is taking into consideration the removal of the cultural aspect of the Arts and Cultural Commission. I alongside our chair organized the city of Kyle's first city-sponsored MLK celebration, which turned out to be one of our most successful projects. We actually were able to plan this event within three weeks and everything provided to citizens at this event was completely free and donated. We were all truly lucky to have groups like the Kyle Buta Kiwanis Club, Kyle Public Library, Ambets, and several city council members who are sitting on this dais today invest time or money into this important cultural event. However, we needed the Arts and Cultural Commission to bring these groups together. The most important aspect of this event were, of course, the students who were invited to speak. A very diverse group of students from all three high schools in HACISD donated both their Saturday morning and their voice to discuss important issues in our community through prose, poetry, or oratory in front of 100 in-person spectators and 1,000 virtual spectators, and it would truly be a shame if their messages were tuned out. Many students talked with me or our chair after this event and their outpour of appreciation cannot be overstated. Many of them actually asked to be speakers at the 2024 MLK celebration, and I truly hope that this city won't let them down. After a year of work, we have found that the cultural events we put on in conjunction with various holidays such as MLK, Black History Month, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Cinco de Mayo, and Juneteenth were the most effective in bringing our community together. It shouldn't come as a shock that various other citizens are here to speak about this same issue. I would like to remind you all that art, just like our community, is diverse. Please take it from the artists. Art is not just a sculpture or mural. Art is cultural objects, paintings, theater art, culinary arts, poetry, textiles, sculptures, and so much more. We envisioned a vibrant Kyle where creativity, prosperity, and progress work hand in hand in order to promote the city's history, diverse culture, and sense of place. It shocks me and many other artists in this community that art and culture working together is even a question. If it wasn't already obvious back in January or even February, art and culture belong together. And I alongside almost every other artist would argue that art and culture are synonymous. Art cannot survive without culture and culture cannot survive without art and neither can our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all of the citizen comments forums that I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? Ma'am, if you wouldn't mind, please stating your name for the record and when you're concluded with your comments, please fill out a citizen comments form.
I will.
Thank you.
My name is Wilma JV and I'm a president of Kyle. And I watched the last month's meeting and I had many concerns and some of them have been expressed already by the people who have spoken about the separation of art and culture. And I made, my impression was that you, you consider art completely separate from what cultural items are, and I don't believe that's true, nor that when you had your discussions and you voted, that you explicitly tell us what you were going to do about the cultural aspect. You said, well, maybe parks can do it, maybe somebody else, library can do it, but that's not good enough. We need to know who is going to be responsible if it's not the Art and Cultural Commission. I think eliminating all those activities is not good for our community. Those things bring us together. And somebody, and I don't know which, 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 who did it, but somebody said, we need to do American things. But what is more American than, than celebrating the different cultures that comprise America and Kyle? So I think you all need to reconsider that decision or at least set up a cultural commission. If you don't, if you want art completely separated, which I don't think you can do, there needs to be a separate one. I think the art and the culture went very well together when you had people doing art projects and speaking projects, doing all the cultural events. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak?
Anna Bowling again. I'm sorry, I know I already spoke, but I didn't use my whole three minutes. I had no idea, no clue that there was even any conversation about separating arts and cultural, culture from the Arts and Cultural Commission. I think that would be a horrible thing. I think that would be a travesty. It's not a service to the-
Ms. Bowling, I'm very sorry, but you're not allowed to speak twice. I'm sorry, it's just against the rules.
It's just shocking to me that that should be considered.
I understand.
So I felt like my prior comments were not informed.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments. Citizen comments is now closed. Next up is agenda item number four, agenda orders. Anyone who has a request to move any of these items around? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to reports and presentation. Receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction on the possibility of increasing required widths of streets. Ms. Schmeitz. Mr. Lutz.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Lutz, senior planner for the record. One second. Slide show is not working here. Today, we have a discussion topic on regarding fire lanes within the city of Kyle. So previous council actions, April 4th, council directed staff to bring in ordinance to increase those fire lanes from 20 to 24. I think, believe the fire department prepared that. Then May 16th, the council did table the item that was their first reading of the ordinance. Then June 6th, council tabled the item again to get more information on what other regulations or issues could be affected by a possible change to that. So that's why we're here today to kind of go over some of those issues that may come up. Before we get into all of the options, I do want to just quickly touch base on what a fire lane is. It is generally a section of pavement reserved for fire and rescue services, could be in a city street, could be in front of a building. They're generally in urban areas. You can see them on highways or around the front of buildings. Walmart, the red lines, that's where they park clear and free. So the fire lanes are founded within our dedicated rideaways. Our rideaways are open to the public. Within those rideaways, you'll find sidewalks, street trees, planting strips, pavement with possible turn lanes and on-street parking. So municipalities do adopt typical street cross-sections. Those provide options for how ride, how rideaways are designed and then they have subsequent rules to adjust to each type of designed street. So when discussing these fire lanes and their relative widths, it's important to identify what our primary and secondary goals are. Staff needs this information to kind of craft a better ordinance if we're going to move forward. So what are those goals? Obviously, the first is fire access, life safety. But secondary goals could be allow more or less on-street parking, obviously pedestrian safety, and then other traffic improvements could also be secondary goals of any proposed changes. So again, depending on what those goals are, they can be done through multiple amendments, either through the subdivision ordinance, through the fire code, through the zoning code, that could address those issues that are brought up or any concerns you may have. So I'm going to go over some street cross-sections here in a little bit. That way you can kind of see what I'm discussing as far as how those streets are laid out and those pavement widths are affected. Before I get into that, I do want to touch on neighborhood design. The streetscape does affect how your neighborhood looks and feels. Again, changes to pavement widths, sidewalks, planting strips can change how that neighborhood may look, but that is somewhat subjective. I think everybody has their own opinions on, on what, how things look. But from a planning perspective, we do need to include all types of street cross-sections so that they're appropriate for the development itself, the environment, and the terrain. I also want to touch on safety. That's a big discussion that comes up when we discuss not just fire life safety, but the, the safety of the pedestrians in the area. So generally slower speeds are considered safe, safer if you're on I-35, going 75 is not as safe as going 70. But it's a little different when you get into a neighborhood. So for an example, if a speed limit in a neighborhood is 45 miles per hour and there is no on-street parking, so just clear, visible line of sights, and a child runs into the street, you have approximately 2.5 second stopping time. If you lower that speed to 30, you'd think your reaction time would go up, but if there's on-street parking, then those, those times can be reduced even further because you don't see that child actually coming out and they're already in the street when they come out from behind a car. So I wanted to touch base on those, just so you kind of have that in the back of your mind. So here, this is an example. This is a 28-foot street pavement, curb to curb. You can see there is parking on both sides. Your typical vehicles run from six to eight feet, so not a lot of space in there for a fire truck. The fire trucks do require 20-foot fire lane, but I would like to mention that they are generally eight to 10 feet in width. So they can maneuver through those areas, but on curvilinear streets, because of their length, they need a little bit more wiggle room going through. length, they need a little bit more wiggle room going through. Here's an example, 32-foot street. You'll notice that the design is very different. It is wider, so there's no planting strip between the sidewalk and the street, so there's not a fall area, which we call it. So if you're walking and you trip, you're now in this street versus in the planting strip. So here are the typical cross-sections. So I'm going to start with our smallest allowed street right of way. So in the city, you can go down to 28 feet of pavement width with a 20-foot fire lane. So I've identified the fire lane in red. This is just the two travel lanes. These here are 10-foot drive aisles. The standard is more closer to 11, but you can go down to 10. That leaves parking on one side of the street at 28 feet. So moving from 20 to 24-foot would eliminate on-street parking for streets that are at 28 feet of pavement. Now, we have a 38-foot section of pavement. You'll see here, this allows for two parking spaces on each side of the street. It gives you an 11-foot drive aisle in each direction, and that 20-foot fire lane is within that, those drive aisles. If you increased that to 24-foot lane, there would actually be no change on a 38-foot wide street. So you can adjust your widths, you can take a foot off of the parking, you can add some widths into the drive aisles, go from 11 to 12, so that can work. Not a lot of changes there, doesn't affect the public realm. So having said that, we have some options for you that we can go through. So the first one is no change. If we do that, we keep the current minimum, 20-foot fire lane, no changes to other sections of code, but we would need stricter enforcement on those no-parking areas. So manpower, labor, there is a cost associated with that. The no-change would allow developers to kind of determine street designs that meet their needs, match their development patterns, while still being in compliance with city regulations. Additionally, the zoning code could be amended. We could require additional off-street parking for those areas that are not allowed to park on-street, so that's kind of an option. But no change would just be that. And I would like to note, the fire department has, in our discussions, has said that since the adoption of the fire code in 2018, our new subdivisions, we don't see a lot of issues. It's generally the older ones before we had the fire code on the books. Option two would be just to increase the pavement width. It would still keep the 20-foot fire lane, but we would need to enlarge that area to go from, to make more room. So at 28 feet, if it was allowed, and you go to 38 feet to kind of get everything in there, parking on both sides of the street, you're looking approximately at 35% increase in pavement width. So not just a cost to the developers, but there's a cost to the city as we have the ongoing maintenance of those roads. So again, 35% increase would just be going from a minimum of 28 feet to a standard 38 feet for all new subdivisions. If we do increase the pavement widths, we may need to adjust the right-of-way widths. Again, depending on how we want those streets to look, five-foot sidewalks, three-foot sidewalks, street trees, no street trees. If we want all of that, we need to increase the right-of-way. It may result in lower densities, less taxable land. Again, that would be dependent on the developer. Are they going two-story, one-story? Each development's kind of different. And again, I mentioned it, sidewalk width, street trees. Again, if we're increasing that pavement, we may need to decide on how we want that street to look. Do we give up the street trees for the extra parking? Do we lower the sidewalks to accommodate the larger fire lane? Option three would be increase that fire lane to 24 feet and increase the pavement width. So kind of do both at the same time. With the minimum pavement width going to increase, we're going to have to increase the pavement. Again, that's depending if you want parking on both sides of the street. There's a lot of options here. So the same modifications as option two. We'd have to look at all of that, bring those changes back to you. So something to consider for option three. Option four would be not change the fire lane, but maybe modify our subdivision regs. So we can look at our subdivision code. Currently, we don't have some identified cross-sections that we can hand to a developer and say, hey, these are the types of streets you can build in the city. This is what we allow. I mean, these are the only ways we allow them. Other cities do provide several options or examples as part of their subdivision ordinance. Here, we do not have that. We just kind of work with them to make sure that what we're doing is adequately reviewed by fire and city staff. Regardless of the options chosen by you tonight or how you direct staff, we do recommend probably updating the subdivision ordinance just to create those examples so that it's easier for developers and staff to kind of communicate what we expect our streets to look and how they function. As part of option four, again, we look at each cross-section. We'd look at, okay, if you are going to go with this cross-section, you have to red stripe certain areas, you have to no-park certain areas. We could also amend the zoning code to say that, okay, if we're going to build this street and we're not going to allow parking on one side, then those homes that front that street need to have additional setbacks for their garage to accommodate guest parking or just parking for growing families. So a lot of options there. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Again, no change to fire lane, no change to subdivision. We stand pat as we are. Increase pavement widths, but keep that fire lane the same, and then look at all of our other cross-sections. Or we increase the fire lane, increase the pavement width, still look at all of our stuff, or we just kind of modify the subdivision ordinance and the zoning code to make sure that the left hand is talking to the right hand on some of those deals. So I know it's a lot, I covered it really quickly, so I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Jason. Does anybody have any questions for the presenter?
I think, I like option four. It's more surgical and definitely brings our desires, I think, to bear. It's good to know what kind of streets are being presented. I was curious, of those pictures that you showed, which one of those mirrors our current ordinance and which one of those is not in compliance with our current ordinance? The 28-feet with parking on both sides, which looks really congested and cramped, I would assume would not be a street that would be allowed under our current ordinance.
No, we'd have to adjust that one because of those fire lanes. Again, older subdivisions, we didn't have the fire code adopted, so that's kind of how we went. Newer ones, we haven't had much of an issue. So as far as aesthetics of the street, again, we can tackle that through cross-sections.
What is the minimum street width with parking on both sides that's allowed under our current ordinance?
Under the current code, you would need at least a minimum of 32 feet. I went with 38.
So can you go back to that picture?
Yes, sir. Do you want the actual photo?
Yeah, the actual photo.
Okay. So this is a 32-foot street. This cross-section will be a little bit different. It's going to have the parking on either side, but the fire code allows for six feet of that parking. That's kind of how you get to 32. You have your 20-foot fire lane, and you have six feet of parking on each side. So it is tight, but again, we keep in mind that fire truck is eight to 10 feet wide. It's not that entire 20. You just really need those around those curves. That's where the length of those fire trucks, as you start to make that turn, the back end kind of can't maneuver through there. So that's something we need to keep in mind.
Any other? Councilmember Bradshaw?
And if we went with an option like the fourth one that you presented, and we did, parking on one side, we would be able to apply that to all existing neighborhoods as well? Or only future developments?
It would generally fall through future developments. If we're not making any change to the fire lane at this point, we won't go back and try and unwind some of the old subdivisions. If we do go to 24, this is not like a zoning code where you can say, this is an existing non-conforming use, it's going to stay the way it is. We'd have to work with the fire department, say, okay, now we need 24. Let's go each subdivision, each area, and have to red stripe either no parking on one side, in some cases, maybe two. So that's kind of one of the issues with going to 24. We can't just, they're grandfathered, but we do have to look at those access. We may need to make some changes, the way we've done in Plum Creek along Wetzelons.
I have a question. Is there any difference zoning for private subdivisions?
There are different subdivision regulations for private, so generally, those can, they don't have to be built to city standards because they're not owned but not operated by the city. You also get varying streets through our various PUDs, development agreements. Sometimes those get negotiated as part of the deal, and so maybe it was extra parkland, but they wanted smaller streets. There's a lot of variables that go into those. So from a staff perspective, when we look at any type of agreement, development agreement or special zoning, we do want to start looking at those, you know, a little bit more eagle-eyed, so to speak, to kind of look at, make sure we're not creating any unintended consequences or issues for the neighborhood long-term.
Because I think that's exactly where this problem was stemming from, is from the one particular private subdivision that Kyle has that has this problem. So, and I'm asking is because if they can only buy the rules of the fire code, then is there any specific rules that we can set on a zoning that will make them either have the sidewalks or wider streets?
Our subdivision rules can dictate all of that. We can dictate wider sidewalks, wider pavement widths. We can dictate, we can change the regs for private streets and say they have to be brought up to a higher standard, that they can't just be kind of minimalistic in design. So all of that is in our purview and your purview. If that's the way you want to go, we can start looking at some of those.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Hi, Jason. Thanks. Does number four add any additional maintenance cost to the street for the city?
Anytime you are no-parking or expanding pavement widths, then yes, there's an increase in maintenance cost. If option four is done, there could be a situation where you're keeping the same type of pavement width, there's no extra cost, but the maintenance of the curb, the red paint versus signs, we had that discussion last time, that's an ongoing maintenance cost. But again, we could also update our subdivision regulations. We could say, right now, we put maintenance of ponds, detention areas, that's on the HOA to maintain. We could also include those red curbs as part of that maintenance. So again, anything's kind of, any options open as far as those regulations are.
Okay. Councilmember Bradshaw?
I would like to make a motion to direct staff to bring back subdivision regulations regarding, regarding the width of streets, parking on one side of the street, width of sidewalks, and all of the other wonderful things that you have talked about.
But you want to clarify that to just proceed with option four?
Yes.
Got it. All right, you want to, can you restate it?
I would like to make a motion to direct staff to proceed with option four.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Bradshaw. Second by Mayor Protim. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilmember Foreskill.
Thank you. So I was looking online yesterday, doing some research, and I was wondering, is it possible to do like the no-curb look? And so it's like all evened out. I know they have that in a lot of other countries, I guess I should say. And so the cars are just, I hate to say, share the road with the pedestrians, but it gives her, like, it gives like a cleaner look, or like a look of like, like you're not walking on a street, it feels like more like a sidewalk, but it is a street. I don't know if you get where I'm going with this.
I do understand, and I have seen some of those. We can do anything. That kind of change gets a little bit, I'll need to get with engineering on that kind of stuff, because generally, your curbs right now, what they function as is they transport water. So that's our storm sewer, that's how they get around. So if we get rid of the curbs and we go to lay down, you know, your fire truck may like it because they're not going to pop a tire if they drive over it, but it's going to change drainage patterns. So, you know, it's not going to be now directed to a pond, it's going to sheet flow kind of where it was going. So that change is a little bit more in-depth.
I mean, maybe not so much for the whole city, but for new private development.
We could add that type of street cross-section as an option, but we just need to make sure that we buckle down all of our other regulations, it doesn't have a negative impact.
I mean, it would have to pass engineering. So that would be up to the developer to figure that out. But I think it's a nice, pretty option, and it makes it the road shareable with the pedestrians and the cars. So I don't know. I saw it, and I thought it looked pretty neat, so I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Well, the good thing is, is when we do those options for street cross-sections, we will be bringing those back to you for approval. So if there's some that you don't like, you can vote just these or not those.
Okay. Thank you.
So on the intersection improvements, in particular as it relates to the parking, you know, we've had discussions in the past. I know Councilmember Heiser's brought it up. I brought it up during the budgeting process for red paint. So the argument for red paint is that it works in terms of preventing parking. If you just have a no-parking sign up, that doesn't work as well. So if you say that curbs have to be painted, but it's the responsibility of the HOA to maintain it, in our subdivision regs, we need to make sure that we have a method of enforcement to cite the HOA if they do not keep those, because the experience that I've seen in any subdivision, as well as in commercial developments that have red paint, generally speaking, it's out of sight, out of mind, and they do not maintain that red paint. Including Plum Creek, for example, the majority of the painted areas are faded to the point of not even being able to see them anymore. And so personally, because I care about the outcome, I think the better way to handle that is for us to develop a curb painting program, because you can paint a lot of red curb in a day, and it is not that expensive, once you have the infrastructure internally to do it. And it's just extremely effective at keeping vehicles from parking too close to intersections, which is not only a fire concern, but also a concern for, you know, pedestrians trying to cross in those intersections and cars trying to just navigate them. So my preference would be to see a premium place on the output of wanting to make sure that our intersections are properly marked for no parking in those areas, and that we make the investment to make sure that that is, that curbing is maintained long-term. But I don't know if council has feedback on that, because we've discussed that a lot, and I think staff does not like generally the idea of painting curbs red or maintaining red curbs. So we're going to have to be the ones to be more assertive there and give them that direction. I don't know if you want it here or later, but I care about it a lot. I think it's valuable to the city for us to make sure that in the areas, especially within subdivisions where there is no parking, that we paint it red.
Yeah, we've heard that on the curb painting program, Mayor, and we can certainly bring that up at our next budget meeting and try to have some resources for that program. We'll be glad to do that.
Well, if we're going to bring a proposal, let's also incorporate it into our subdivision regs so that everything's synced up, so that we're not letting anything fall through the cracks.
You have to make it a requirement, like every two years or every five years, require each HOA to give a status report as far as what they've done or upgrades.
I just, I have-
Something written, correct?
Well, HOAs go defunct, and HOAs don't necessarily invest in those things, and I've seen how quickly we can paint the curbs red in its city infrastructure.
And if we do it, we can get a reimbursement back.
Maybe. My preference would be for us to make the investment, because that's what we can control. Trying to get the HOAs to do it just means that the output's going to be lower. But that's just-
They could use a fuchsia red, or who knows?
Councilmember Zuniga.
But you made, you just said that the city owns the streets, which, so how do you make the HOA maintain a street owned by the city?
Well, I think there's-
That's the question I-
Yeah, but I mean, for example, there are street trees that are in the right-of-way that are basically a part of the city, but the HOA is required to maintain them in various subdivisions. So it's commonplace, you know, we, you know, HOAs have responsibilities of certain types of maintenance, but it is, your point is well-taken, and I'm, I don't think they'll do it. If we try to make that pass citywide, plus that's for new subdivisions, what are we going to go into, well, we can't do it in Steeplechase, we can't do it in, you know, at least half a dozen of our subdivisions. Why don't we go in and paint those curbs red, you know, at the intersection? Why don't we do that just all throughout, develop a program? We can't do it overnight. And then we could have a crew that just works through the city, keeping our curbs painted red. It's just an investment. It's also an aesthetic. There's nothing that makes a street look more rundown than having red curbs that are super old and with tire marks and faded and, you know, cracked and blotchy, so.
I've never seen a red curb since when, where are they?
Like, in your whole life, you've never seen-
I mean, where in color? I mean, where?
We've, we have done it at various places. So we did it, the one that comes to mind the most is on Sanders. That was a street that we made no parking, and we put the signs up, and it just did not work, and we painted the curb red, and it worked. So that was really the anecdotal evidence that I needed to become a believer. But even still, that was four, five years ago when we did that, maybe not even that long, and those curbs are already fading out and need a fresh coat. They need a crew to go through there. to go through there and repaint them. So. All right. Any further discussion? Holes in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number six. Receive a report, hold the discussion, provide staff direction regarding implementation of a five lane, five lane cross section from Button Creek Road Bond Project to include a two-way left turn lane for safety and operational benefits.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Joe Cantalupo. I work for K. Freezing Associates, and I am the project manager for the city's road bond program. So we have quite a bit of information. I'm going to go quickly. And if I go too fast, please just ask me to slow down or ask me to stop and take a question. We have the slides coming up. Perfect. Thank you. It's the, it's, it's the five lane presentation? Okay, while we're working on the uploading or getting the the presentation up, I'll start with some background. So the current traffic analysis for the Button Creek Road project, which runs from Porta Cove Road all the way to the intersection with Lehman, that current traffic analysis shows that a five lane section is needed instead of, thank you, instead of the four lane section recommended by the design engineers as part of the preliminary engineering report that was done pre-bond. And these are the project limits. The the project length is about 1.1 miles. And again, it runs from Lehman all the way down to Porta Cove, and it runs in in front of the high school. So the preliminary engineering report that was done in 2022 analyzed traffic data for corridor capacity only and determined that a four lane section was needed. And that would have been two lanes in each direction. And the current design phase, which is the 30% plan, analyzed traffic data for both the corridor, the length, and as opposed to and including intersection capacity, and determined that a five lane section is needed. And that's two lanes in each direction. And the abbreviation you'll see for the rest of the presentation is a two-way left turn lane. And so that's a center lane that allows you to turn from either direction left. And there are several benefits to a a two-way left turn lane. One is that there's reduced delay. Because you're giving cars that want to make a left turn their own space, they're not black blocking a travel lane. And so you you get less delay, you get more, less conflicts, and it's just a whole lot of more efficiency. Again, those cars that want to take the left are getting out of the way of of the cars that want to go through. And it really is just about that simple. And so in the case of this particular project, you allow drivers turning out of the school to complete their turn in two stages. And it reduces, actually, it reduces the amount of time for the driver. And again, it reduces conflicts with with vehicles that are going through. There's also increased safety. When they do these predictive crash analyses for the addition of these two-way left turn lanes, what they find is that there's up to a 45% reduction in crashes, again, when that lane is added. So it's a lot more efficient, and it's a lot safer. And there's two options that we're presenting in terms of adding that fifth lane or that two-way left turn lane. The first is to put it right in front of the the high school only. That is one option that takes most of, or the area of the corridor where there's the most turns, most left turns in and out of the high school, and 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 makes that area more efficient. The other option is to add the two-way left turn lane for the entire, I'm sorry, the entire project limits. That's about that 1.1 miles. And there is a a course of a cost, a cost associated with this. So the two options, if you were to choose to add the two-way left turn lane in front of the high school only, it's about $253,000 of additional construction costs. And the additional right of way is about $150,000. And that's a total of about $385,000. If you take the second option and put the two-way left turn lane for the entire project limits, again, that's the 1.1 miles, you add about $1.5 million of construction costs, about an additional $285,000 of construct, I'm sorry, of right of way for a total of 1.785 million dollars. Now, the total estimated project cost is $20.6 million. And as I transition to the next slide, you're wondering, well, does that cost increase? And the answer does not. When we did the cost estimates back at the preliminary engineering stage, what we did was we asked the design engineers to build in contingency amounts for things that pop up that are unexpected or that need to be changed. And so what we would, what we're showing is that that 1.785 million dollars would come out of the 8.5 or so million dollars of contingency. And so when you look at these two rows, what you'll see is that the projected budget, right, doesn't change from the 28,581,000 dollars. But what you'll see is the contingency amount changed. So we move money out of the contingency into the money needed for right of way acquisition and into the money needed for construction. And so again, the cost doesn't change. We'd be moving money out of contingency. And what you'd be getting if you approved option two, which is for the entire corridor, you'd be getting a corridor that will operate more efficiently and and according to the predictive crash analyses would be operating a lot safer than just leaving a four lane. And with that, our recommendation is that we be given the go ahead to proceed with the development of the five lane section, which is two lanes in each direction with the two-way left turn lane.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cantalupo. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Mayor Protim.
All right, thank you. So this would also be a turning lane into South Lake Ranch as well?
If you went the entire corridor, anything between Porta Cove and Lehman that had a left turn, it would cover.
Left and right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Floriskill.
Thank you. Do you, is there any way we can see like a layover of like what the road would look like while it's there? Because I just have concerns that it might go into someone's yard or like how much easement we're going to need, how it's going to affect the residents already there?
This is all we have with us this evening. It does require additional right of way. And there are homes on the north side, and then there's the school on the south side. It does, it could potentially affect some of the the parking or maybe even some of the the side yards. But there's no, at least from where we are now, there's no impact to any homes.
So that's a five lane? That's that you're saying?
That's what the five lane would look at. But what you're showing, what you see on the screen, councilmember, is the portion that would be just in front of the high school. And we showed that as an example. It gets a little bit easier as you go, not totally easy, a little bit easier as you go east.
Yeah, I guess I'm not necessarily understanding like exactly the the impact it's going to have on this area. So
There is additional right of way that that needs to be
Right. And you're saying it's going to take some of the parking lot from the high school? And it's not going to affect any of the backyards to those houses on Button Creek? Yeah, if if it's only the high school.
It has a greater impact to the parking of the high school, less of an impact on some of the side yards. They're not the backyards, the side yards that hit that are on Button Creek. But if you look, if you look closely at the diagram, what you'll see is the sidewalk. So the road is not going to be, the sidewalk gets a little bit closer to the homes. And if I can see from this diagram, I don't think we're encroaching into the properties of those homes that you're seeing in the diagram. That pink line is the sidewalk, and it looks like it's just skirting along the property lines or the current right of way line.
So, Ms. Floriskill, if you look around from from the very bottom, when you go up on top, there is a hill up there on the top where where the high school is. And you still have a big wide enough space. So I guess what the pink is, is where the proposed sidewalk's going to be, correct?
On the top.
On the top.
On the bottom, it's just the right of way.
And then the idea here would be to add that turning lane for people to turn left into the subdivisions, and also those who need to turn left into the high school that would not impede the traffic. They would actually have a safe turning lane to have on both sides. And with the sidewalks that would be added on both sides, you'd have that room.
Are the sidewalks gonna, they're going to be on both sides? It looks like just one.
Yes.
So only one side of sidewalks?
One side? Or is it both sides?
I believe it's both sides.
Because the the pink on the bottom looks a little, it just looks like proposed right of way.
Yeah, I only see like one. The proposed shared path would be at the 10 feet wide.
Because the north, north of, north of Bunton would be for the residents that would go South Lake all the way to the up to the new subdivision. The one on the bottom from the high school would lead all the way to Cassetta Ranch. So you'd have those two pathways on both sides.
The vibe, and I should have clarified this, the vibe is on one side, the sidewalk is on the south side. So that's the difference in the colors, councilmember, and that's the difference in the widths.
So there's like the five sidewalk and the 10.
Yes, ma'am. The sidewalk is is five feet. The vibe is the wider width. And again, the vibe is on the north side. The sidewalk is on on the south side.
Well, if that's the case, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to look at regarding implementing the five lane cross section at Button Creek Road.
Second, motion by Mayor Protim, seconded by the mayor, that we direct staff proceed with option two, correct? Okay. Is there a discussion on that motion? I'll say that, you know, in the previous road bond, all all we could do with that is cut costs and cut lanes. This is the first time in seven years that we have added lanes within a budget, budgeted amount, which just goes to show that the way we set this up is allowing for us to take good looks at these roads and still have capacity to build them the right way. Makes me very happy. Councilmember Zuniga.
Thank you, Joe. I do like to see the whole thing here with the five and the additional two left turn lanes. But if you only did that one section from the high school part of it, do you create another issue going from the five back to the four past that part?
There will, there will be a
Because you recommended this one as the safer, to do the whole thing versus the shorter segment.
So there's two things to consider. One is, and I can't tell you the exact length, but there would be a transition where depending on the direction you're headed, you're transitioning or out of the five lanes. But the other reality is, is that you will eventually need the five lanes. And the only reason you would, in my opinion, that you would pick option one just in front of the school is if we hadn't built in the contingency, you know, for things like this that pop up. It would be if you wanted to, if you didn't have the funds set aside and you wanted to save money. But because that's not the case, in our opinion, it makes perfect sense to do the whole thing now. The traffic will not decrease, it will increase, and right of way will not get cheaper, it will get more expensive. And then you'll have to go back to the community and disrupt them again, you know, with another round of construction.
I have a question. Is there any way that we could have a presentation that comes in like 3D with animation of how like elevations and traffic flow of the streets, the roads?
It is, it is possible for us to do that for this and, you know, for other types of projects. It is not built into what, you know,
The scope of work that you guys are I just wanted to have a more visual presentation. That way we know exactly, you know, where the roads are and the sidewalks and the vibe that are incorporated. I don't know if with the CAD program, you can just convert that in 3D.
It is, it is certainly doable. It takes some time. And if that's something that council would like us to do.
Doesn't have to be pretty.
No, it, 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 it takes time. And it could, because we hadn't planned on it, it could, money aside for a second, it could add, you know, if it holds up decision making, it, it, it could add to the schedules for the projects.
Never mind.
Any further discussion? Holes in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number seven. Receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding implementation of a roundabout at the intersection of Lehman and Bunton. Mr. Cantalupo.
Yes. I don't know, the presentation disappeared. And here we go. Thank you. So this is, Mayor just read the item. This is, has to do with the intersection of Lehman and Bunton. And you might remember that the preliminary engineering report that was done pre-bond recommended a roundabout at this location. And since then, the city asked for follow-up traffic analysis to compare the roundabout to the traffic signal. And so I'm going to walk through this, a little bit of information, a little bit about the signal, some of what they do and don't do. So this is the current proposed layout for the roundabout. And you'll see that to your right is north, you'll see the Lehman Road extension. And I want to point one thing out to you. If you look into the lower right corner of the diagram, you'll see the roundabout is overlaid, a house there. And the first thing I want to tell you is that as we laid this out, we're able to verify that there were no one living in those homes. So those are currently vacant properties. And it's just something, you know, we thought you'd, we should draw your attention to. So this is the layout for the roundabout. It's a two lane roundabout, and it would feed in to the two lanes that are coming in from Bunton and the two lanes that go to the Lehman Extension moving north. And those two lanes on Bunton leading into Lehman through the roundabout are needed because of projected volumes. The next diagram I'm going to show you is what the signal looks like. This is the layout for the traffic signal. And the thing I'll point out here is it is not, it doesn't hit the home as directly as the roundabout does. But in terms of impact on properties, in that parcel in particular, it is less land. But we believe that the impact washes out to be just as severe in terms of use and the impact on the home, which would probably, not probably, will be a total take. And so those two diagrams just orient you a little bit to what the layout for the roundabout looks like and what the layout, the current layout for the signal looks like. The second slide starts to talk about a little bit more detail about the the property impacts. And it's a lot of times it's true that signals minimize right of way impacts. But because of how the Lehman Road extension needs to come into the existing intersection, the the impacts to right of way aren't as diverse as they would normally be when you compare to a roundabout to a traffic signal. And there are two properties, I'm going to go back for a second. There's that property where the Lehman Road extension runs through. That is about four and a half acres. And then the parcel that I pointed to that has the home on it, that's about an acre. And those two things together, they're under one ownership and about five and a half acres. And so when we look at how much of those properties roundabout takes versus a traffic signal, for that larger property, right, that four and a half or so acre property, it would affect about 50% of the property of the of the land. It would be needed for the Lehman Road extension, 50% for the roundabout and the traffic signal. So for that property, the roundabout and the traffic signal have the same right of way impact. So for that property, the roundabout and the traffic signal, uh, have the same right-of-way impact. For that smaller parcel, the one that's just over an acre, the one with the, the, the structure on it, the house on it, the roundabout takes about 70% of that lot and the traffic signal right now takes about 40% of the lot. But the thing to keep in mind, and this is just what we, uh, have seen and what we understand, is that, um, there may be in terms of the value of the property and how you can use it, given the intersection arrangements, the difference between 70% and 40%, it may result, um, in the same level of impact to the property. So while there's a geographic difference in terms of land area, the practical effect may not be as diverse or is spread, i- if that makes sense. So now I'm going to talk a little bit about, uh, the benefits of, of both types of intersections. So with regard to a roundabout, and this is probably the strongest argument that is made for roundabouts, not just in Kyle, not just in Hayes County, not just in Texas, but actually, you know, everywhere internationally, is that roundabouts have, uh, are, are much, much safer. And the big thing that that part of the industry points to is that they have, um, about a third less conflict points. And that is remembering that this particular roundabout that we're proposing is a two-lane roundabout. And the other thing to keep in mind is that, um, the conflict points, it's a third less and many of them are less severe. In other words, um, the chances of having like a, a, a head-on collision or what we call a very, uh, 90-degree T-bone are, are much, much less. So you have less conflict points and the crashes are generally less severe, uh, in a roundabout. And, and again, there are other benefits that I'll talk to operationally, but the thing to keep in mind is that roundabouts are much, much safer.
May I interrupt just for a second?
Of course.
Would there be any pedestrian gaps in this roundabout? Cause I, I'm pretty sure we all received concerns from some residents specifically regarding safety.
I think you read ahead.
It's coming.
It's coming. So now these are, you'll see, I'm going to talk through some of the, uh, uh, again, the, uh, the pros, the cons for each of them. And, and now I'm going to talk a little bit about, uh, pedestrian safety. So the report that we got from Cobb Finley, which is the design engineer for this project, um, they made a couple of statements about, uh, roundabouts versus signals. And the first is that signalized intersection roundabouts are, you know, you use them both in, in Kyle. And they both have, again, advantages and disadvantages. And before I get into those benefits, just, it's important to think about them holistically. It's, it's very easy to point to one thing and say, this works, it doesn't work. But what we're encouraging the decision-makers to do is to think about them as, as a whole. So signalized intersections, the advantages are, you know, those crossings, uh, the pedestrians get a very, uh, clear visual and sometimes auditory, you know, there's a sound, uh, that guides them when it's safe to cross. The disadvantage is, a- a- again, those conflict points. Um, but it's also, uh, cars tend to go through intersections at higher speeds. And the crashes that occur, whether they're crashes between cars or heaven forbid, between pedestrians and cars, are more severe, uh, because they're at higher speeds. And, and so there's a, um, an advantage and disadvantage, uh, to pedestrians at signalized intersections. Roundabouts, there are lower vehicular speeds, right? Just the way cars approach them, the way they navigate them, the way they're designed. Um, they make people want to drive slower. And if you have slower speeds, if there are crashes, not only are they less severe because of the angles, but they're less severe because of the speeds. Um, there are crosswalks at every leg of the roundabout and I'll show you, uh, 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 I think we have another diagram coming up. And the crosswalks are typically shorter, which means that pedestrians, um, the comp, the potential conflicts between pedestrians and cars is reduced because they're just not in the intersection as that long. Also, roundabouts have refuge islands. So for folks who are a little bit slower, maybe have trouble, uh, you know, walking at speed, a roundabout, um, has a built-in refuge. So someone can take the crossing in two steps. Whereas if you're in an intersection, you know, you've got to make, generally, you've got to make the whole crossing in, in, in one shot. And for folks that are, um, a, a little bit slower, that can be a little bit of an issue. So there are some disadvantages. Um, so in a roundabout, it is possible that the crossings could be a little less visible to drivers as they're coming in. Um, and depending on the time of day and the level of traffic, it may be a little bit more, uh, difficult for folks to cross in terms of finding the time. They don't have signals or audible sounds, right? Um, and, and, and so it could be a, a little bit more difficult for people to figure out when it is, uh, safer to cross. The yield rates on a, um, a, a two-lane roundabout um, are a little bit higher at a single-lane roundabout than they are in a two-lane roundabout. Um, and, and that's something to consider. But again, we're trying to look at this holistically. And again, that whole, the whole concept of holistically is, you know, signalized intersections have clearly marked, uh, crosswalks like roundabouts do and they have, uh, pedestrian signals. But the trade-off is that they have higher speeds. Um, and again, the roundabouts have slower vehicle speeds and they have, um, maybe more options for people to cross and they have that refuge. So again, some of those pros and cons. One of the, the questions we were thinking through is, you know, where are the pedestrians coming from? And so the first thing I want to, uh, just state about this diagram is that we did not go out and take the design engineers to go and take pedestrian counts. And so we were able to talk to some of the staff from the city, particularly the folks over at Public Works who are out in this area, uh, every single day, they're out year-round. And their observation was that, and, and that sort of golden color where it says proposed roundabout, that is the intersection. And then their observations indicate that kids going to the high school, they cross, uh, Lehman, you know, from Brutus and then they cross Bunton Creek from, uh, Lake Washington Drive. And, and so again, adroitly, just based on, um, you know, not strict pedestrian counts, but observation is that there aren't a whole lot of people headed to the high school that are crossing from the Bunton-Lehman Road, um, intersection. It, it's just, again, another, uh, point of information, uh, something to think about. Now, we've been talking about safety and, and I've explained that in, you know, in our opinion, and actually industry opinion, that roundabouts are a lot safer. I want to talk a, a second for about, um, some operational statistics. These, if you look at the two columns, alternative one, the roundabout versus alternative two, the traffic signal. If you look just, you know, five years out to 2028, um, if you look at the morning peak period for roundabout, it remains, um, level of service D, which is, um, still acceptable. But when you get to the traffic signal, you're getting a level of service F, which means it fails, which means the, the delay people experience through the traffic signal, um, according to traffic and the engineering standards is, uh, unacceptable. If you look at the PM peak period, the level of service, um, for the roundabout is level of service B, which is, uh, more acceptable, of course, than a, a D. But if you look at the traffic signal, the level of service in the PM is a level of service E, which is just one step, um, um, you know, um, below D and it's, uh, labeled undesirable. Um, there is no, at least what we know right now about costs and the current designs, there is a tiny bit of difference, uh, in the, um, in the cost of, uh, implementing uh, the traffic signal. The utility impacts, things that need to be relocated and taken care of are about the same. Uh, there is, um, a little bit more of an impact to a property on, uh, Bunton Creek Road. But there's an impact to a different property on the, on the traffic signal. So the recommendation that the design engineer has put forward and that the GEC staff, right, the reviewers of what the design engineers are doing, is that, um, you, you know, that a roundabout for this location is a better decision. And it's based on, uh, the expected safety performance of the roundabout as well as the operational performance of the roundabout versus the traffic signal. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer questions.
Councilor Floriscow.
Thank you. Did you happen to do any reports or, um, researching reports, um, regarding kids ages 15 through 18 driving in a roundabout?
Uh, no, we've not.
Okay, this, this area is directly near a school. And, um, during the morning and the afternoon, it will be driven mostly by young kids. And so I would be really interested to know on, um, what that looks like. Cause as, as we are all aware, um, kids tend to rush through things and nothing we say and nothing we do is going to change that. They're just going to be, they're going to do whatever they feel like they're going to do. And so that is my fear for this area, in, in addition to the pedestrians walking on the street. I have a fear that the kids in this area are not going to know how to utilize this. And maybe over time they might, but let's remember every four years as new students. Or every year, but every, you know, four years people graduate.
I, I would, and I'm not trying to argue, I just want to provide a, a slightly different point of view is, you know, and I don't know, I don't have the research, I don't have the statistics. Uh, I would imagine though, that, uh, a young driver, uh, probably has just as much of a chance of, uh, maybe running a yellow light or maybe even missing a red light as they would, you know, getting into trouble in a roundabout. Um, but again, the point is if, uh, again, heaven forbid, uh, a seventeen-year-old driver were to run a red light, they have a much greater chance of getting into a more severe cha- crash than if they happened to enter a roundabout at a higher speed. It would be more of a deflector crash. The other thing I'll tell you, which is not evident from the diagrams that, you know, that we show at this level, but roundabouts, the approach roads to roundabouts are, are almost always designed to begin to give the driver the sense that something is changing. So you're not aiming right in to the circle. There's sometimes visual cues, like a little jog in the road to, to begin to get you to slow down. Again, that's just based on the world according to Cantaloupe and what I know about how these things work. But if someone is going to make a mistake at a signalized intersection, my opinion, and again, I have to qualify it, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm a transportation planner. But my opinion is that someone, whether it's an adult or a, a young driver, is more likely to get into more serious crash running a yellow light or a red light than they are if they happen to enter a roundabout at a slightly higher speed. And, and if we could have found that research to back up some of, you know, my opinion and observation, we would have, we would have brought it. But I, I think if you think about, I think you got to think about both sides of the coin.
So, so expanding on that, how many roundabouts have you helped build around the school?
Oh, not around the school. We, we, our company designed, um, the one in Marketplace and prior to moving to Texas, um, when I was at the Delaware DOT, um, I was assistant director planning and director, deputy director planning just before we moved to Texas. I actually, um, um, managed a project to develop a statewide traffic coming manual. And a big part of that manual, not the only thing, was the use of roundabouts. And we did not limit, um, to the manual, we did not limit roundabouts, uh, either according to the size of the road, its functional class, or to its location. If it could fit in design-wise, um, it was, um, it was, it always remained a possibility. We did not preclude it from being used anywhere if it made sense operationally.
Okay, that, yeah, that, that, so the answer is zero. Um, but that kind of concerns me because.
There's no reason, there's no reason to be disrespectful like that.
No, well, I, I asked a question, my answer was, how many has he done? And his answer was, uh, long, instead of just saying none. But thank you for the correction, I appreciate it. I'll be sure to return that favor. Um, and, and Joe, you know I like you, we have no beef. I, what I have to do though is look out for my residents, right? And so because the Delaware DOT didn't think about the location, doesn't mean I'm not going to. It means I am, because this is near a, a, a place where there's lots of kids, young children, who really don't know any better. And there's always going to be an issue of right-of-way and accidents. And, and maybe it's not high-speed, but one accident at a low speed still is going to build up traffic, is going to cause issues. You're going to have to have, uh, you know, police come out there. I, I just have a real concern for that. And we've received several emails stating that the, the light is working fine and these are people who live out there. And so I'm trying to take into consideration everything you presented with the questions that I have as well. And I, it just would have been nice to have that additional information overall.
Oh, I, I completely understand. And, but I just, if I may, and again, I'm not trying to be argumentative. It may operate, you know, well now, the intersection. And I have no doubt that there are plenty of intersections, not just in Kyle, but throughout the county, throughout the state, that operate well now. What we're trying to do, right, is make it so the city doesn't have to go back and, and, and redo something later on. And that's why they look at projections moving into the future. Those level of service, it doesn't start to get sketchy, it doesn't start to fail. You know, according to the projections, five years from now, right? And so if it, if it opens today, maybe it doesn't fail in 2028, maybe it makes it to 2029 or 2030. But if you continue to grow, right, the way you're growing, um, you know, according to the projections, and this is just from an operational point of view, the roundabout will last longer. Or maybe it happens sooner. I, I don't think any of us know really whether or not the pace of growth you're experiencing is going to stay the same. It, it may slow down, it may increase. And so just please keep that in mind. It, it's, it looks like it's operating okay today. But what we're trying to do is plan for the future and put the best intersection configuration that we think will be the safest and last the longest operationally. You know.
Councilor Parsley.
Thank you. So, you know, to her point, we did get several emails, but I'm, the same time, I'm trying to think about what's going to happen five years from now, 10 years from now, when we have outgrown what we have right now. And is the light going to be the most effective way to keep the traffic flow? But that being said, um, we do have our own traffic engineer. So I don't know if we can postpone this until our traffic engineer gives a look at this and gives his opinion.
There it is. We can certainly take a look at it. I, I think, um, from an engineering perspective, most likely it's going to be that the roundabout is recommended. All the data, uh, points to that and, uh, it's also recommended by an outside independent engineering firm as well.
But like a traffic engineering firm?
Uh, that's Cobb Finley, uh, is that the traffic engineering firm?
Yeah.
That's the firm that provided them.
Right, they did the, the traffic engineering.
Okay.
And, um.
So it's, that's independent of Joe, it's a separate firm looking at that.
And it's just part of the design.
Okay.
We, you know, the other thing we're doing with the roundabouts, and it, it's not specific to just this one, is as they progress their way through the design, uh, we have a, a, another firm in our team that offers like another level of review to make sure that they're optimized, right? Like, we may be able to minimize the impacts on, um, you know, on right-of-way, for example, a little bit less. And maybe able to help, uh, uh, optimize the design. But that's not, again, that's not something we're doing specifically with this. It's just these things we built into how we're administering the program to make sure that we're putting the best choices forward. And again, and I understand that there are lots of people who are not, you know, comfortable, totally comfortable with roundabouts yet. Um, but, you know, uh, our entire team thinks that this is a better choice for this intersection. Again, because of the safety implications and because of the operational implications.
And to your point, I mean, you guys are the experts. Um, and so I'm pretty sure, you know, I'm not against roundabouts, I know a lot of people are, I'm a fan of them. Um, the only concern about this particular one is the school. It's the only concern I have. The only concern about this particular one is the school, is the only concern I have.
Well, I just, my, my anecdote, which is not scientific, is that in high school, I had three friends die at signalized intersections, getting T-boned. So, if that intersection was one that was in particular close to the school, if that intersection had been a roundabout, the data makes a very compelling case that they'd still be here. So the fact that it is next to a school is the reason I would want it the most because I think the argument that it's close to young drivers is an argument for the roundabout in a, in a, in a compelling and objective way as is possible. Ninety percent reduction in traffic fatalities applies across the board, especially when teenagers don't necessarily know the signals. I, I, my, I got into a wreck when I was in high school, pulling out in front of somebody. And I'd had my driver's license for two weeks. I'm very thankful that I was okay at the end of that day, but it, I, I definitely agree that high schoolers are, they drive in a much more reckless way and signalized intersections. They, they just, they think they're invincible, I've seen it. I was at Kohler's and Sanders not six months ago, watching a kid fly across the intersection doing, doing one of these things and didn't realize there were six lanes of traffic going every single which direction and T-boned right into two elderly ladies and spun the car around. I was there at the intersection waiting to turn, which is why I've been so staunchly trying to get a roundabout put there because that wreck would not happen in that way if it was a roundabout. So that, that's just, that's just my opinion, I'm, obviously, I've been on the record supporting roundabouts for all my years. Mayor Proten.
Okay, all right, here we go. My district, my area, yes, roundabouts are beneficial in a lot of areas. Roundabouts do hurt, do help in specific neighborhoods. But at this intersection right here, and I'm going by also what I've seen, and because I drive it every day picking up my son, is that, number one, you're very, very close to a business if you put that roundabout there, how are they going to get out? Also, we're going to be expanding these roads to five lanes possibly, and you're going to have this flow, continuous flow going, right? It's going to continue to flow. How are those people going to get out of the neighborhood at South Lake Ridge? How are those people going to get out of the school if you had, going to continue to have that flow? And I had this debate with a resident at Bunton Creek once, and she was all for this. But my thing is, is that I have to look at public, the public safety overall. We have a lot of speed demons in this city. We just got finished putting up a stop sign over there because we can't get people to slow down, right? So tell me how these people are going to get out of their subdivision, how these students are going to get out of the school if we're going to continuously have this flow. I would rather put, um, take a minute away from you to slow down and stop at a stoplight and slow down the traffic control, have traffic control versus the flow to make sure you get home safe. And I know a lot of people are in a hurry and it's a lot easier, we're looking at the growth and so forth, but when you look at also going back to your map there of the, of this, of the students that cross the intersection, you know, one's down at the end, the other one's upon high, there's going to be a continuous flow of traffic. You're going to have those kids going through. And when I look at this and I see from the experience of waiting for my son at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night from a football game, there's a lot of those kids that cross the street up there on Steeplechase, going that way. I'm looking at it in those eyes. If you could just bear with the council, because again, it's going to be our decision, but here is an email from a resident from South Lake Ridge. "I feel we oppose to a roundabout at the intersection of Lehman Road, it is too dangerous. We have Lehman High School students in a driving school at that intersection. I can only imagine the potential accidents with students, pedestrians trying to cross. I also have seen quite a few incidents where people struggle to get through these to begin with. The traffic light option seems to be a much better choice. The traffic lights we have now have improved the situation significantly." One more resident that reached out to me. "We have problems with drivers not knowing how to use roundabouts already at Bunton and the semi trucks over the edges and inside and out. I fear thinking about students walking to the school and having to cross anywhere near that roundabout as there is really no proper crosswalk or with lights. The temporary lights have been amazing so far with what is done for our traffic situations. I will say that there will, there being a stop sign at Bunton Creek creates a bottleneck, but no matter which proposals, intersections, we can get that fixed." And since we have Captain Hernandez here, if you don't mind, sir, if you, if you know this for the record, if you don't, that's fine. Have we had any accidents with those temporary lights since we installed them back in February?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Okay, no problem, it's okay. So, what I'm trying to get at council is I understand that the roundabouts are important for the traffic flow, but right by a high school, right by where students are at, right by where other vehicles like eighteen-wheelers and construction trucks and those types of businesses that are down the road, would a roundabout be suitable for this area? Controlling the traffic is number one, my public safety for all of our cities. And I understand the issue about having the flow and the traffic and so forth, but we also got to look long-term to see about, would this be the best fit for this area? And the, the people, the residents have a more say than I do because it is their area, it is, it is their children, it is their neighborhoods that, that they're voicing about having these traffic lights. And I want council to really consider that when we're taking this vote, if we're going to decide to go with roundabouts or if we're going to put those crosswalks there and the traffic lights. So please just take that in consideration when we're making this vote, this decision.
Thank you. I keep hearing the word "safety" being thrown around and we're all for safety. I think we all can agree that we don't want to see any of our residents ever be injured or hurting, but I've yet to find any data that says that roundabout, roundabouts are not, are, are less safe than regular traffic intersections. And according to the great state of Florida Department of Transportation, roundabouts produce fewer crashes, ninety percent fewer fatalities and seventy-five percent fewer injuries, ten to forty percent fewer pedestrian bicycle crashes, and they're safer for beginner and elderly drivers. I know that's not Texas, but it is a official document from the state of Florida. My own personal experience is a lot of you had heard, have heard me say, the majority of adults I know don't know how to drive through roundabouts, they are treated as stop signs and they, I worry about adults adapting to new forms of transportation technology than I do than kids. So, that's, I've yet to see anything that says that this would not be a safe thing for us to do if it's best, in the best interest of the long-term plan.
All right, we got to, got to make a vote, not going to be unanimous either way, so would somebody want to put a motion out there?
Can I?
Councilor Zuniga.
Yes, listening to, to various concerns of the advantages and disadvantages, would it be possible for us to just get data from roundabouts near school intersections? Just, just, just to have that other reassurance that there have not been more of an increased fatalities?
I can tell you that if we're directed in that way by council, we'll continue our search and see if we can reach out maybe to some of the sources to see if that data exists, specifically, you know, to the beginning driver group. Aside from the, you know, the generalized information that council member brought up, we haven't been able to find specific data on ages yet. But if council wants us to take another, you know, period of time and continue to look, we're happy to do that. We'll do whatever you've, you know, whatever you, you direct us to do.
I, I've seen one lane roundabouts that work really well. This one in particular is unique in that it's a two-lane, the whole circle at the intersection here.
Right.
And branching out to two more, two more.
It's not unique, there, there are plenty of two-lane roundabouts. Uh, one, it's just, the number of lanes is dictated by the projected levels of, of traffic.
And what if you get caught in the inner, in the inner ring? Are you just, will you just stay in there until it's finally safe to get out? Because, uh, my, my concern is that driver that needs to get out, but more vehicles are coming in. I guess, has that all been calculated that this is the, the safest?
I'm not sure I know how to answer that honestly, council member. I, I mean, I, I've been in two-lane roundabouts and, you know...
But don't you have to look in, in front, okay, you have to look to your left to make sure it's safe to get in, but then as you look that way, you don't know what's in front of you. Boom, boom. So, don't you get the blind spot?
I think that happens a lot when someone drives, when you, when you turn, you know, I mean, you go through the same sort of, not the same exact, but I would imagine you'd go through the same decision-making process when you're, you're shifting lanes on a freeway, right? You've, you've got to be aware of what's happening behind you and in front of you. None of that, that changes, right? There are decisions that need to be made when you're in a roundabout entering it, there are decisions that need to be made when you're approaching, you know, a yellow light or a double left on a, you know, there's lots of intersections that have double lefts and I've seen those cars, you know, collide, right?
And I guess the, the one real question I want to ask is, Councilmember Tobias, to me, brought up a very good point. If traffic is always moving, will it cause a danger to the high school, uh, traffic that needs to get out since there's no slowdown? Because there's nothing to slow you down, there's no, there's not, not a delay.
I know about the slowing down, I think what you're asking is how will the gaps work, right?
Right.
And, and it is true that cars will have to wait for gaps, but remember, one of the points we made at the beginning was it's for either traffic, traffic signals, roundabouts, or even stop signs, right? I think it's, it, it, it is natural tendency, we focus on the one thing that we like or don't like and what we're encouraging, what, regardless of the decision you make, because it really is up to all of you, is to just think about them as a whole. It's really easy to say roundabouts are better because, or signals are better because, or they're worse because, and zoom in on the one thing. And maybe, you know, we're suggesting is that you think about signals as a whole and roundabouts as a whole, you know, and, and think about them that way. But again, you know, we've presented some information, if council decides to support it, you know, we'll live with that. If you decide not to, of course, we'll live with that. And if you want us to go on a search, you know, to see if we could find more specific data, we're happy to take another, you know, take another shot at that.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to it, I think that it would fit there, but I just need to see that extra additional information to see that, that's the correct strategy.
Mayor, I'd like to go and make a motion. Mayor Proten.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to have staff not implement the roundabout at the intersection, but to implement traffic signals.
Motion by Mayor Proten, seconded by Councilor Floris Cale, so discussion on the motion. Roll call vote.
Floris Cale? Yes. Parsley?
Yes.
Zuniga?
Zuniga?
Yes.
Mitchell?
No.
Heizer?
No.
Tobias?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
No.
All right, motion carries, four to three. All right, we're going to take a ten-minute break. We will reconvene at nine, nine fifteen. Thank you. All right, I'm going to call this meeting back to order. Councilor Parsley.
I would like to make a motion to rescind my last vote, please.
The motion has to be to reconsider.
To reconsider item seven.
All right, second, motion is made to reconsider agenda item number seven. Is there discussion on that? All right, roll call vote. Yes, votes to re, it's to re, it brings the item back up.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Heizer?
Yes.
Floris Cale?
No.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Tobias?
No.
Parsley?
Yes.
Zuniga?
No.
All right, motion carries four to three. Councilor Parsley.
I would like to make a motion to approve a roundabout on the intersection of Lehman Road and Bunton Creek Road.
Second, motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by the mayor, is there discussion on that motion? Roll call vote.
Zuniga?
Uh, no.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
Heizer?
Yes.
Tobias?
No.
Parsley?
Aye.
Floris Cale?
No.
Mitchell?
Aye. Motion carries four to three. All right, next up is the consent agenda, items number eight. Oh, there we go, eight through seventeen. Is there anyone who has any questions or wants to remove any of those items from consent? Councilor Floris Cale.
I would like to pull agenda item twelve, please.
Okay, anyone else? Motion's on consent? All right, second, motion by Councilmember Bradshaw, seconded by the mayor, that we approve agenda items eight through eleven and thirteen through seventeen. Is there discussion on that motion?
Is this all but twelve?
All but twelve, yes.
Eleven, oh, no, I'm sorry, yes.
All those papers say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item number twelve, approval of resolution of the city council, accepting the Limestone Creek Phase One subdivision improvements. This is Mr. Barber's item. Councilor Floris Cale.
Thank you. My request would be to postpone this until we could have some clarification, some agreement. They said earlier that they're close to an agreement and so before the city moves forward to lessen its liability, I would really like to just have, give them an opportunity to meet, maybe give them a date, you know, subject to, you know, next two weeks or whatever, to be able to meet and finalize any agreements that they have.
Leon, do you have any comments on that?
No, Mayor, I don't have any comments on that.
Well, my concern is that if we do that in order to allow for negotiation to take place or we not, giving an advantage and holding ultimatum out over a development, over landowner disputes. So as was stated in a previous meeting, the dispute between the flood, stormwater runoff is, and the percentages that are the obligation of Limestone Creek are, are in dispute. So, you know, my opinion remains the same, we've approved this agreement, we've approved these plans, this is, if, are the subdivision plans consistent with the agreement and approved by staff?
Mayor and council, Leon Barber, city engineer, these plans were approved by staff. Our floodplain administrator, Kishav Nawali, reviewed these in great detail. The information that we have from the engineer that I talked to today is that the development on Fa- Phase One is actually decreasing the amount of runoff in Hundred Year Vent to the southeast portion of their, that tract.
And that's staff's opinion on this and staff recommends approval?
We do recommend approval.
I'd like to make a pro, a motion to approve agenda item twelve. A motion by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye? Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion carries five to two. All right, next up is agenda item number eighteen, consideration and approval of a resolution relating to establishment of the city's intention to reimburse itself for the prior lawful expenditure of funds related, relating to constructing various city improvements from the proceeds of tax and obligations to be issued by the city for authorized purposes. Ms. Libby.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmember Stephanie Libby with Norton Roads, Fullbright. This resolution is, or this agenda item is related to agenda item nineteen. In agenda item 19, you all are going to be asked to consider approval of a contract to engage engineering services for a wastewater treatment plant. It's anticipated that some type of obligations would be issued sometime in late 2023, early 2024, potentially, to finance that improvement. But the city's not yet in position to issue those obligations. What this resolution does is it memorializes the city's intent to reimburse itself from bond proceeds, if and when bond proceeds are issued, for any expenses that are paid right now from the city by its general fund. Doesn't obligate the city to undertake the project, it doesn't obligate the city to eventually reimburse itself with bond proceeds, it just preserves the ability to do so. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have about the resolution.
Councilmember Floris Kail?
Thank you. I just want to ask two questions. The $101 million is for wastewater treatment services only? Is that correct?
It's for the, that's the estimated construction cost for the wastewater treatment plant.
So, any money that we're discussing in this agenda item is only to be used for wastewater treatment, correct?
Any item, I mean, this resolution covers the city's intent to reimburse itself for obligations that are issued for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. And then, I just want to make sure we have your recommendation on the letterhead. Recommendation says NA, so if you could just tell us that you backed this up, or you can recommend this.
I mean, I can advise you that it's in compliance with both state law and federal tax law, but to the extent that the city would like to preserve the ability to reimburse itself from bond proceeds, that this resolution does need to be adopted. I don't normally recommend course of action from a policy perspective.
Okay, Brian, so are you recommending this?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Further, could you recommend, okay, I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Hi, Stephanie.
Hi.
So, this is just an intent to reimburse for bonds that was issued? I think I remember last year, there was a reimbursement that happened. So, how much is the usual amount for something like this, for a project like that? And is it a one-time reimbursement at the end of fiscal year?
So, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a one-time reimbursement for the dollar amount that we placed into the resolution itself. Our firm, our tax attorneys like to cover the project in its entirety. There are some tax attorneys or some issuers who may elect to do it on a project-by-project basis, and so they may adopt multiple reimbursement resolutions. And as they hit the cap set forth in the original resolution, they'll come back and adopt another one for federal tax law purposes. The rate of reimbursement is tied not to the date at which council adopts the resolution, but it's tied to the date that the invoice itself is actually paid, or the contract is placed into service. And so administratively, it's a little bit easier if you do one resolution to cover the estimated project in its entirety.
So, if I could just provide a little bit more context, this is related to item 19?
Right.
That if you did not have the reimbursement resolution, then you would have to issue the bonds, or find another alternative way to pay for that cost to do the contract. And so, for just efficiency of the bond sale, you would try to have all the costs as you're going through the design, that you put that in the reimbursement resolution, then you issue the bonds later on, all at one time. So, that's typically how we've tried to do those, in other places I've been as well. But this is tied to an expense that we're trying to make on the next item. That's the reason for the item.
Okay.
Otherwise, you would have to either issue bonds, and only $2 million, when you know you're going to have lots of other costs for the construction and full design. It's only a 30, I believe, a 30% set of plans for the next item.
Right. Well, I definitely want us to have the ability to collect the reimbursement. And I remember last year, it was quite significant amount, so there's...
The city did adopt a reimbursement resolution related to some of the road bond projects.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Floris Kail?
Just one more question. Where, where is this money coming from upfront?
So, I believe it's coming out of the fund balance of the fund, and then it will be reimbursed when the bond sale is made.
So, the general fund?
No, it'd be out of the wastewater fund.
Wastewater, okay, thank you.
Right.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, to approve agenda item 18?
Motion by Councilmember Zuniga, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kail, that we approve agenda item 18. Is there discussion on that motion? All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
And before I move on, is there, actually, is there any objection to agenda item number nine being finally passed, calling the election?
Objection.
All right, never mind. We got, we got one from the gallery. I guess we're not allowed to, is that the point? We're not allowed to finally pass?
We're hoping to finalize the polling places, dates, and times for the second reading.
Okay. All right, and next up is agenda item 19, approve a contract with CPNY, DBA, STV Infrastructure, San Antonio, Texas, in an amount not to exceed $2,195,236.40, to provide a preliminary engineering report, 30% for Phase Two wastewater treatment plant expansion. Mr. Barber?
Good evening, Mayor and council, Leon Barber, city engineer. Mayor and council, as you know, we just completed the improvements at the existing wastewater treatment plant. We went from three million gallons per day treatment, up to four and a half million gallons per day. One of the requirements of TCQ has out there is that, once your plant starts operating at about 75% of your maximum capability, you need to start working on design. And for at least several months, at least three months or more, we have been reaching past that number of 75%. And the other requirement is that when you hit 90%, you should be under construction. So, this particular item 19 is to request that we authorize CPNY, also known as STV Infrastructure, to start to, beginning the design for the project. We're going to ask them to do a 30% design. In addition, we're also going to ask them to provide the design, the bid award, and construction for a non potable water system. With me today is Tim Sanford. He probably can give you more details about the non potable water system that he's asking for us to have approved. And then, also our project manager that completed the last project. So, if you have any questions, we are going from four and a half to nine million gallons per day on our next phase. And we have one option, of course, is to begin design. A second option, we don't want to go there. That's, we don't want to risk TCQ coming after us, so...
Second option, just don't go there. Councilmember Floris Kail?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 19?
Yep. Second, motion by Councilmember Floris Kail, seconded by the mayor. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember Zuniga?
Thanks, Leon. You know, I'm very informed about the wastewater treatment plant. So, this is only an interim to go to nine MGDs? And we're going to move actually to 12?
Eventually, 12, yes.
Right.
Yes, this next phase is only going to take us up to nine MGD.
Okay. So, when I was looking through the contract here, it seems like maybe something that wasn't done in the past is the grit and the rag control study? And then, there's an odor treatment, odor treatment analysis. What is that going to look like? Is that to give recommendations of what type of mechanisms we need to look at to control the odor as it grows to nine to 12?
I'm going to ask Tim Sanford to come up. He's the expert on that predictive part of the operation, so...
Which I think that's a very important part of this, as it gets bigger.
Good evening, council, Tim Sanford, Division Manager for Treatment Operations. Yes, so, we're going to be evaluating grit control, so they're going to be doing some sampling that will occur briefly after, you know, this contract is acquired, hopefully. We're also going to be doing some odor control studies as a facility to determine, you know, where those needs will be necessary, and to also discern, decide what systems will be most efficient for us to handle those needs. I believe those are the two that you mentioned.
Yes. Would y'all be able to share that with council when we move forward in the expansion phase? What the odor analysis study showed? Like, what were the sources of the worst odor?
Definitely, I'm sure that's something that we can provide as we get those reports. We can make those available to our management staff, who can pass those along to you guys.
Thank you. I'd like to...
Any further discussion? All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item 20, approve a contract by and between wastewater treatment, I'm sorry, wastewater transport services and the city of Kyle, in an approximate amount of $230,000 per year for the hauling and disposal of wastewater treatment plant solids. Mr. Sanford?
So, thank you. Again, I'm happy to present to you that we are now operating on de-watering press at the wastewater treatment plant. That is an exciting time for us. It is a cost savings for the city, so that's why I'm happy to present it. What I have before you, we did a sealed bid process to acquire bids for the hauling and disposal of the solids that we press at our facility. What we're seeking approval on is the council's vote and approval on a contract with wastewater transport services. They're the apparent lowest bid, based on the two sealed bids that we did receive to that sealed bid process. We go to the next up, please. So, with the award of this contract or agreement, it will eliminate an existing contract that we have with WWTS. Previously, they were handling the pressing of those solids, and then also hauling and disposal. So, this agreement will eliminate them being on-site and pressing as we're doing that in-house. We followed all the proper purchasing policies for the city, all that is in the backup material for you. Anything else I need to cover? Just terms of the contract briefly. It is a two-year contract initially, and then there's two additional two-year terms available, so maximum of six years. If, you know, that price is good with the city, the price is good with the contractor, we'll continue moving forward with that. Next up, please. Now, it's just a quick, don't pass it up so quickly, it's a... That's our press in action, you know, saving the city money. So, next up, please. So, the options I have before you is approve as recommended by staff with WWTS. Any recommendations on amendments that you guys would like to have? We can definitely look at those, or approve the other sealed bid that we received or Synagro. Again, we are recommending that WWTS is a significant savings versus the other sealed bid that we did receive, so that is what we're recommending. And any questions? No questions? You know, I am looking for a vote.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Hey, just another quick question. How often is the solid pressed, picked up? And is any of it ever held at the treatment plant longer? What's the longest hold time for the solids there?
So, our current schedule is nine boxes per week, three days a week. And the hold time on that is we press Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's picked up Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Okay.
So, it's no longer, no more than 24 hours.
Thank you, Tim.
Councilmember Floris Kail?
Thank you. I'd like to approve agenda item number 20?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Floris Kail, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve agenda item number 20. Is there discussion on that motion? All of us in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
I just want to clarify, approve as recommended by staff?
Yes, as recommended by staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Man, I had some comments I wanted to make at that picture. All right. Next up is agenda item 21, presentation, discussion, and possible action to improve animal safety during extreme weather events. Councilmember Zuniga and Floris Kail, either one of you want the floor?
Sure.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This agenda item was just brought because we did hear many concerns of residents as we're going through really severe temperatures. The plea from neighbors who saw a dog that needed help. And so, I think that it's important that the community stay very active and work with our law enforcement to help support them, so that we can educate each other and learn how can we be better trained to reduce these types of severe situations that could end up in a unnecessary animal death. And that's why I had Robin here. Did you want to add anything, Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to say, in my conversation with Robin, we came to an understanding that this is not about, if our officers are doing good or bad, it's more about educating and working together in order to live through these unprecedented times. I guess that's how you say it. These are historical heats that we're going through. And so, I've heard people say, "Oh, they're dogs, you know, I've had dogs all my life." And my response to that is, nobody has lived through these times, this type of heat, ever in the history of Texas. And so, we're trying to find ways to work through them. And I think another important point is that laws change all the time. And so, it's hard, if you don't keep up with these laws constantly, to understand what our rights as a city are, and the liability to pet owners. And so, when Robin said she was willing to come up and talk, and even extend some free classes to our staff, our officers, I jumped on the opportunity. My belief is you could never get too much education. And so, with that, I'll let Robin go ahead and do her PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, thank you so much, council members, for sponsoring this item. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Mayor and council members, for listening to this presentation. First and foremost, I want to say that I don't know how much the public understands that you don't just show up on a Tuesday night and pop in for a few hours. There is a tremendous amount of work that goes on behind the scenes throughout the week, just for this position alone. And many, if not, if not all of you also hold full-time jobs, so I commend you and your public service that you're doing for the city of Kyle. I'm not sure if it's underappreciated, but please know it is appreciated, and I hope that people who are listening today understand the amount of work that you do for the city. Whether or not they agree with the decisions you make, there is a lot of work and thought that goes into the process. So, thank all of you for that. I also wanted to mention, I'm coming to you here as an adjunct professor. I teach animal law at St. Mary's Law School in San Antonio. I've done that for the past several years. And I'm also a former assistant DA at two counties just south of here. I prosecuted several different cases. Primarily, I started doing family violence and animal cruelty offenses. And so, that's the, sort of, the perspective that I have today. So, this is just a non-exhaustive list of a combination of state laws and local city ordinances that you may or may not know about. And I also want to mention, I'm not, I'm not, this isn't a training necessarily for you, I just wanted to give you a bit of a taste of how animal law affects the city of Kyle, and what sort of training and opportunities there might be for your law enforcement, Kyle PD, and also your animal control officers, to learn a little bit more about the laws that do affect your city. And so, your ordinance construction, I think it's, I think you have great ordinances. I'm giving a presentation at IMLA on best practices for ordinances affecting, that have, that apply to animal laws in August. And you guys have a part of your ordinance, I'm using as an example of a well-written ordinance. So, your ordinances affecting animals are well-written. It's just a matter of actually enforcing them. And so, some of the other, some of the relevant ordinances or state and local laws that affect residents and people here in the city of Kyle are the unlawful restraint. You have an ordinance, which unlawful restraint is tethering. And then, we also have the state law, the Safe Outdoor Dogs Act, which I testified in front of the legislature to get passed. Thankfully, it was brought back during special session and passed, and sailed through after a tremendous amount of pressure. So, there are two different laws that address tethering. One is obviously at the state level, and you guys have an even stronger ordinance here in the city. Negligent care, and I just noted, it's ordinance number 5-35 in your code of ordinances. Enclosure requirements, 536. Dangerous dogs and animals, of course, that's also state-regulated as well in the Health and Safety Code. Abandonment, that is in your local ordinance, 537, as well as Texas Penal Code 42.092. And that's an arrestable offense in the penal code. Of course, city ordinance would only be up to a Class C misdemeanor and not arrestable. And then, you have the state, the state animal cruelty laws under 4209, which is agricultural animals, and 092 would be non-livestock animals and companion animals. You also have ordinances addressing animal cruelty here within the city of Kyle. Other laws in your city that you've successfully developed and passed are animals running at large, animals in cars, and that's under 5-112. And then, of course, tethering, which is an ordinance that I mentioned. So, I wanted to, because we had some, several speakers speak about an incident that recently occurred regarding tethering, I wanted to sort of dig a little bit deeper into the tethering ordinance that you have, and so, very well-developed. So, the debt, there is a reference... So the debt, there is a reference to a running line or a trolley system in your ordinance, and it's defined. And so pulling from your definition, a running line system or trolley system is a cable attached to two stationary points with an additional cable hanging down. And then it moved, it goes on to say that it allows for a dog to run freely and less likely to be tangled. So that's the whole intent behind your ordinance as I read it. It also must include a swivel. Feces must be removed. You cannot tether during a severe weather event. So this includes below 32 degrees effective temperature or how the temperature feels, or during a heat advisory by state or local. So, you know, it specifically says a local heat advisory or a state heat advisory. So I wanted to bring that to your attention because, of course, we've been off and on in a heat advisory here in, in Kyle, in this area, in central Texas. And I'm, I'm sure that there are several dogs that are potentially currently tethered out there during these heat advisories that should not be.
Hey, Robin, I have a quick question. Do you know if the Death Star Bill impacts our ability to regulate this? Do you know what I'm referring to?
I do. I, I, so I, I, I'm not going to, I can't answer that, but I'm sure your, I'm sure your city attorney might be able to or could, could let you know, but...
Because we just, we got surgical with our dangerous animals ordinance not too long ago. And where we were really trying to consider some of the impacts of exactly like the story here, except it was on a dangerous animal side. And I'm just curious if...
So, so from my perspective as an animal law professor, and I, I would defer to your city attorney.
Briefly tell us what that is, because we may not all know.
I would defer to your city attorney.
Okay.
For that legal interpretation.
Okay.
I don't think you're on. Are you on? There you go.
Is it on? Okay. The Death Star Bill is, I think it's House Bill 2127, I think is their correct number that was adopted in the regular legislative session that adopts a broad preemption in several sections of state law. And then there's a general, kind of a general preemption provision. And as far as whether it preempts your animal control ordinance, that's something I'd like to take away and advise you.
Okay.
Except it's just, everyone is interested.
Very page answering.
I will tell you, I will tell you based on all the city attorney discussions.
This is just another example of why I hate that bill, because this is very good. Thank you.
Well, hopefully the city of Houston, and now I think San Antonio, will be successful in challenging it. So shelter, shade, food, and water are also required when a dog is legally tethered. Now, I, I capitalize shelter here because shelter is not necessarily defined in, I believe, any code specifically. There's case law on what, what shelter can be interpreted to be. But from my experience in the case law that I've read, it is dependent on weather. And so an igloo is not considered appropriate shelter for extreme hot or even extreme cold temperatures. So Dr. Melinda Merk, she's a local forensic veterinarian, thankfully she's local, she's testified in, I can't tell you how many cases, all over the country. She worked on, she did the necropsies for the Michael Vick dogs. I know her well. She's testified as an expert vet in several animal cruelty cases in central Texas and all over Texas. I spoke with her, because I've consulted with her on my animal cruelty cases, I spoke with her yesterday. And she specifically said, and I can quote this, "ACOs and PD should absolutely take temperatures inside igloo houses or any shelter to determine how hot temps are. Thermometers should be left for several minutes. An igloo is not appropriate for extreme heat or extreme cold temperatures." So, and I'll, again, get into a little bit of the more, more of the specifics as to this particular case that's been brought up today. But I just, the, this is an educational piece that I think everybody in the room might not have realized until this popped up on the screen. But these are, the iglues that are out there for shelter and shade are so hot that these dogs, and primarily dogs, cannot go in there. They will, they would cook to death. So they're either forced to be outside on a line and burned, burned severely. And there have been several cases of animals that have severe burns, and you'll notice a line down their back recently. They popped up at the emergency vet in the last week because they're just cooking in the sun, or go into a hot box. And so I'm not, I was gonna grant, you don't have to play the video. I was gonna play a video, I'm happy to send it to you, but it's a vet. And actually, Dr. Merk sent this, sent this video to me to illustrate the temperatures inside a normal, a normal igloo that you might get at Walmart or Lowe's or somewhere else to serve as, as shelter. And, you know, it's, it's important to understand that shelter here in the summer months is going to look different than shelter in Minneapolis, Minnesota, or in Indianapolis, Indiana, or, you know, Penn, Pennsylvania, or Michigan. Just like the winter shelter is going to look different there from here. And so shelter is always dependent upon the weather. And that's how I've always prosecuted cases. And I've, I've moved forward with cases, Class As for failure to provide shelter, and I, I took it as more of like a torturing aspect because the dogs are literally cooking to death. And that was in Bear County. I'm happy to share those cases with you at some point if you'd like. So state laws, I mentioned 4209 and 42092 of the penal code. Health and Safety Code, Sections 821.022, that is a civil seizure. I know sometimes police departments think, well, civil, actually, I heard this, not, not from your police department, but somewhere not too far away from here, well, civil, we don't do anything civil. And I'm like, okay, hold on. This isn't necessarily like family law civil. We're talking about a way to remove property, which in the state of Texas, that's what a dog is, from a, from a person and providing them due process. And so you can obtain a warrant to do a seizure, and there are also seizures that can be done without a warrant. They're warrantless seizures. And under Pine v. State, which is still good law, you can do a warrantless seizure for an animal. That's Texas law, still good law. And, and these are just things that I'm happy to educate your PD and your ACOs on in case they don't know. 821101, that is the new Safe Outdoor Dogs Act, that's in the Health and Safety Code. Something that's really important here is to note that the first, well, the things that have changed between the previous tethering laws for the state, previously, animal control officers had to give the person, I want, I don't, I think it's 24 hours to fix the problem before they can actually cite them. That was removed. So there doesn't need to be a warning now. The second thing is, is after one conviction, one citation, and I say conviction, it's a Class C misdemeanor, y'all, it's, it's, it's a speeding ticket, okay? A parking ticket. So one citation is a Class C. The second one, so if the person does it again, it moves up to a Class B misdemeanor. So that's an arrestable offense, up to $2,000 fine and/or up to six months in jail. Now, I'm not saying, you know, you need to go around and throw people in jail, but I do think that it, it's important that the community knows that you take these seriously. And if they get the citation the first time, that serves as their warning. It's a fine, they go to court, and if they do it again, there may be higher repercussions and consequences at the, at Hays County DA's office. I think there's some confusion about the authority of ACOs or APOs and the PD and who has what authority. Both have the authority to handle animal welfare calls according both to state law and your own city ordinances. It specifically states that in there. Your police officers and animal control officers both have the authority to enforce these. Something I also wanted to note is that your animal control is a part of Kyle PD. That's huge. I spent a lot of time trying to, you know, work with another city when I, when I was previously an Assistant City Attorney in another city. And, and they moved away from Public Works and moved toward, moved into the police department, and that's great because they're able to collaborate more and also have sworn personnel in case you do have higher-level cruelties that pop up. So you, that, that's an awesome thing to see. So here's the, the, this is the, the case that people brought up today. So a crime against an animal was reported nine or more times since 2021. So that's that 25-month period that you heard somebody in public comment mention. I say nine or more times because several of the times that people have called and have call logs showing that they called did not produce any reports. Animal control officers appeared, and the reports were not specifically detailed, and some there was no report at all. The complaints about the dog, which have been already mentioned, excessive barking during a freeze, no water, illegal tethering, and then just general welfare. The notes do indicate that a dog had a BCS, which is a Body Condition Score or Body Condition Scale score of three out of nine, which is low. But the dog remained there. Pictures from the neighbors indicate the dog had no water for days, balls were tipped, dog had the igloo for shelter and a heat advisory, dog had illegal tethering line. Animal control officers did not advise otherwise. In fact, I think there was confusion about whether the animal control officers actually knew the laws that they were, they're, they're supposed to be enforcing. There wasn't follow-up. And then animal control officers indicated they weren't, weren't allowed to look through the fence because it was an invasion of privacy, and there's been no follow-up. I did want to clear up, there's the invasion, there is no invasion of privacy. A person has the right, if a person is in a place where they have the right to be and have consent to be, and there are holes in the fence, or there's a gap in the fence, then that person on the other side of the fence has no expectation of privacy at that point. And I made, and I, and I make this example often. If you're living, if you have a two-story house and you're living next to somebody who likes to go out in the back and sunbathe, you know, in the nude, okay? And you look out that, you know, the top floor of your two-story house over to your neighbors, and they're outside sunbathing, they, they have no expectation of privacy at that point. You can law, you're lawfully where you are on the top floor of your house, you look out the window and you see what you see. So I, I think there was some confusion about where an animal control officer has the right to be, where they have the right to look. And that's important because what that does is the person, the neighbor who said, hey, come into my house, come, or come to my backyard, you can see this dog through the, through the holes in the fence. That creates PC, probable cause. And at that point, there should have been no issue with getting a warrant if needed. This person, Kyle, Kyle Police Officers didn't respond until just most recently, even when the animal control officers were not able to respond. And same owner, several issues each, each time, and this person was not compliant. The owner was never issued a citation, not once. No investigation for cruelty happened under state or local law. And the case was treated less of a priority than your, and I looked at your ordinances, the E cigarette ordinance, discharging of a weapon, property code violations. So how many bites of the apple does this owner or all of the owners in the city of Kyle get before they are held to the standard that, of the ordinances that you so carefully developed or the state laws that we have? If I were to, I, I can promise you this, if I were to go out in the Costco parking lot and discharge a weapon in the parking lot, police would be called, and I would bet that I wouldn't even get a warning. But let's say that they said, you know, Robin, go ahead, we'll give you a warning, you didn't know. And I came back the next day or the next week and did it again. And I did it eight more times or seven more times, and I got away with it every single time. You think that would fly? I don't, I don't think so. And I, you know, so I, I just, it just, it really concerns me. I think that it probably concerns many of the, the residents of Kyle that these ordinances are not, not being enforced and the state laws not being enforced. Here are the pictures, in case you're curious. I know that I sent them to all of y'all, many of you, and some of you I heard back from, some of you I didn't. But this is the dog. There is no running line. It has an igloo. It's in a heat advisory. There are empty bo, empty water bowls. Here's some more pictures. Illegal tether, tangled line, that's the whole point of having the tether on a, on a trolley system. This isn't, I just want to make, make it clear, this is not the specific case, but you can see the temperature outside is 85 degrees, and the temperature inside this igloo is just shy of 100. So it's not appropriate shelter in, in these kinds of temperatures. So, you know, what opportunities are there here to make things right, make things better, move in a direction that I'm sure that the residents of Kyle want you to move, move towards? So training is key. I think that both Kyle PD with the ACOs and if city prosecutors, you know, want to get involved, then they can learn from enforcing these ordinances, best practices. Cross-training is paramount to handling a wide spectrum of cases. There's a link between domestic violence and animal cruelty. So you show up, observe, ask, and collaboration. And that's important to note because when your ACOs or PD are like, it's just an animal, you have no idea the amount of cases that I got in Bear County and Comal County that started off with an animal call and ended up with POC, possession of controlled substance case, child abuse case, ag sex assault of a child case, and vice versa. So there's a lot you can discover from somebody who's not treating an animal properly. Family violence disturbances, same thing. So you're, you're missing out on opportunities or, you know, I, I think there, there are missed opportunities on making sure humans are safe as well as animals when these ordinances and state laws are not being enforced. So different training topics would be animal seizures, cruelty investigations, dangerous dog and SBI, serious bodily injury cases, there's a difference. I spoke about that two years ago at the Texas City Attorney Association Conference. Unlawful tethering, state and local best practices for investigations, and then case law and privacy, warrantless seizures and things like that. If animal control officers are off duty, Kyle PD should, should be handling, it's my understanding that, that they said that they would be. I don't know how much that's happening, but I think that that's something that's, that, you know, council members may want to check up on. And Hays County Sheriff's Office. So when calls come in to Kyle PD for an ACO, the, and this is a message that was sent just yesterday above in that, in that picture. The complainant was told that the ACO wasn't on duty and Kyle Police didn't handle it. They said they would let ACO know the next day. I mean, you know, I think, I think that's, I'll let you decide whether that's reasonable or not or appropriate. And then issues with Hays County Sheriff's Office not responding. So if you have an interlocal agreement, are they abiding by the interlocal agreement? Are they showing up when they should show up? Are they, are they closing out cases and not investigating cases? And then honest and open communication with the public. Animal control officers won't, will no longer be working on Sundays for a short period of time. I just found this out today from somebody who animal, the, the animal control officer told to, and then they told me. And I'm pretty sure that the residents of Kyle are not even aware of this. I'm not sure if you're aware of this. They are not going to be working on Sundays right now.
Okay, that was from me to her, because I think it's important, and it was my partner who always knows what's going on. And my, my response to that was, where is this going to be publicly? Because we're volunteers, it's not up to us to tell people as they post things. So I just, I mean, just to be clear.
So I think the point is, is that the communication is important to communicate to the public when animal control officers are on duty, when they're not on duty, so they know who to turn to when they see an animal that's in a, in a not-so-great situation. Who do they call and can they rely on them to respond? And then, of course, enforcement against crime, of crimes against animals are important. And so these are, these are my experiences speaking about these topics. I think training is important. It would be important for your PD to go through training. When I was in Bear County, I trained SAPD in Bear County SO. That was annual training from 2011 to 2014, Comal County, and for two years. Laws for paws, which I don't think that your ACOs have ever attended or haven't attended. Laws for Paws, which I don't think that your ACOs have ever attended or haven't attended in years, I'm told. That is a conference in Austin, so just up the road where the animal control officers have the specific tract. They can get continuing credits, um, and, uh, and attorneys can come as well and get CLE. And you learn all about the most recent updates in legislation and animal law, um, uh, prosecutions and best practices for investigations. Every time I've spoken there, the, the room is packed with ACOs from all over the state. I mean, they come from Lubbock, from San Saba, from all over. So, um, I was just a little disappointed that down the road Kyle did, wasn't there. But hopefully next year, I think it's in April, they'll, they'll be able to make it. Texas District and County Attorney Association 2019, TCIA conference in 2021. And then most recently, um, I gave a presentation and trained Williamson County SO, DA's office, county attorney's office, Travis County Sheriff's Office, DA's office, county attorney's office, Cedar Park PD and their ACOs. And that was last summer. And it was the link between domestic violence and animal cruelty and the importance of prosecuting both and best practices. Criminal justice clearinghouse for law enforcement officers, that was last year as well. And then I'm speaking this coming August, well, we're in August already. So in a couple of weeks on best practices for animal related ordinances. So I, you know, I, I mentioned, um, to, uh, the PD and also your city manager that I'm happy to train, to do a training, um, if you're comfortable having me. I'm not charging you anything. I will take vacation time off to do that. I just want, I just hope that the city can move in the right direction and I'm happy to provide the tools if you think it would be helpful to move in that direction. And so that, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Robin, does anybody have any questions for her? Mayor Protim.
So from the beginning, what is the root of the problem?
I think the root of the problem is the lack of knowledge of, uh, the laws that we have and the lack of enforcement.
I also see the root of the problem is the pet owners themselves. It's the, let's start from the beginning. The irresponsibility, the ignorance and the neglect of these animals. Let's start there because what we're seeing here is the reactiveness. The reactiveness of the laws and the ordinances and the training. So if training is the key, where is the training to the pet owner of how to take care of your dog? Where is the, um, the training on that to where when we run across these situations, we're looking at passing laws and ordinances to, uh, penalize the pet owners? Isn't that what we want to do is we want to educate them and, and understand? And also see why are these animals tied up? Is it because of the nature of the animal itself that's trying to get out of the backyard to where people just tie him up so that they don't have to deal with it? Is it because animals toss the food around in the water and the person may not be there? Not trying to stick up for them, but I want to see where the root of the problem is. And what I always see, what I always understand, it starts with the pet owner, whether it's a cat or whether it's a dog. And it starts there with educating them on the proper care of taking care of your animal. If you're going to have an animal, be 120% responsible for it. Because if you don't take care of your animal, you don't treat it right, you don't understand tying up a dog all day long, uh, is, is slowly killing them in this heat or keeping them outside. I think that's where it really needs to start is with the pet owner themselves. If you're going to have an animal, be responsible for your animal. Make sure it's fed. Make sure it has water. We wouldn't have a lot of these problems if we had responsible pet owners all over the place. And, and it's not a matter of just getting a clap on that. It's just being real. Let's find out what the root of the problem is. If you're going to have an animal, take care of it. Take care of it 100%. And we wouldn't have to have ordinances and court-appointed attorneys and all this other stuff. The training is key. I think it's great. I think what you're doing is, is, is admirable. But let's look at the real issue here is if you're going to be a pet owner, just be responsible and take care of your animal. Thank you.
Councilor Heiser.
Robin, thank you for being here. Do you, have you seen any trends in, uh, I, I guess, better treatment of animals when animal control or PD is more aggressive in issuing citations, uh, class C or misdemeanor? Do, do you believe that if we were to be more, uh, if, if, if law enforcement were to enforce that at a higher rate, that behavior, does behavioral change occur from the pet owners themselves?
So I, I do think there's an educational element to it. And so I think that first, the first step would be to send animal control out or Kyle PD out to educate them and say, listen, maybe you didn't realize the, the tethering ordinance as X, Y, or Z, or do you have financial issues? Can we figure out how to help build your fence so that you can untie your dog? But I think that if the pet owner knows there are not going to be any consequences, kind of like somebody who's speeding, um, they get warning upon warning upon warning, they're going to continue speeding. So I think a, a warning might be sufficient. Of course, it's up to the discretion of the animal control officer, the, the, the police officer. But I, I think that there, there comes a point where I, I do think it's a deterrent for recurrence of that issue by issuing a citation to know that, look, we have an eye, we're keeping our eye on you and, um, we, we've given you the tools. We've given you the education. I mean, I don't think that somebody needs to be educated nine times to put water in their bowl. So at what point do you need to say, okay, enough is enough? Let's, let's issue you a citation. And then if they're like, well, I mean, it's just a citation, I don't care. He's, here's the $500. The next time it's not just a citation, it's, um, it's a warrant for arrest for a class B. And, and, you know, so I, I do think that eventually it is a deterrent. And yeah, I've, I have seen that and I've seen when law enforcement and when animal control are, are knowledgeable of the tools they can use to deter it from happening again, I see it being deterred.
Thank you.
I just have one comment to make, small. So thank you so much for the presentation and thank you so much for reaching out to us. It really, it really hurt my heart to see the dog in those pictures, especially because I have two dogs that think they're humans because they get treated like they were humans. I do want to mention that we currently have one person in training for animal control and one officer that is probably doing two jobs. And I think we just hired another person. So animal control, it's incredibly understaffed. And I'm pretty sure Brianna has to divide herself for the 60,000 people that Kyle has. So hopefully things will get better, but to council member Tobias' point, it is to the owners. And I, I don't know how we can educate owners. I mean, you get a pet because you're going to love that animal to keep you company. So, uh, it is going to be one of those things that hopefully we don't get to see this happening again, um, because it's really hurtful, but.
Councilor Sunaka.
Yes, just to echo what councilmen Parsley and Bear, Heiser and Tobias have said, um, our animal control officers are, um, really, um, under a lot of pressure, uh, to keep up with so many new residents moving in. I think that it would be, um, if we did show a bit more force in these early citations, especially for these repeated people that are taken away from other emergencies, not that this is not an emergency, but, um, that could create a change in behavior. And it does start with the pet owner, but a pet owner who's made multiple violations, I, I just think that I would encourage the community to keep, keep telling us what you see, keep, and, um, if you see something wrong to report it. But, um, yeah, we've got to, we've got to change the, the bad habits of some of these pet owners and, and, and they won't change unless they get a fine. And, and that's costing everybody taxpayer money and time to send our animal control officers over and over to these repeated violators. And, and maybe we can also look at that 311 system, um, to report a lot of these crimes.
Brian, do you have any thoughts, anything you want to share? Chair's first.
I keep seeming to be having a big problem with my mic tonight. Yeah, there's a lot to unpack here. I think there's clearly some things that, uh, we could have done better in this particular case and, um, Ms. Katz and I and Chief Hernandez met, uh, like, late, like, last week, I believe it was, talk about that. There's definitely some things that could have been handled better. So, uh, we take responsibility for that and, and believe it could have been done differently. I think there's more opportunities for training. I think we have to look at the number of staff that we have for the number of issues that are being reported and then try to make, um, you know, good judgments about when citations are needed and when they're not needed. So I don't have that data. Again, it's a lot to unpack. I haven't seen this presentation until tonight, so I'd like to look at that, uh, the training elements and, uh, understand the workload a little bit better so I can make a more informed decision, working with Chief Hernandez and Chief Barnett and Brianna to come back with a, a better plan.
Thank you. Uh, I, I really appreciate that. You know, my commentary is, you know, through the years I've always seen that there's always more than one side to every story, whether you like it or whether you don't. And in particular, I think about our officers, you know, there have been, there have been times when, uh, various complaints have come my way that seem very black and white and then only to find out having, uh, talked to the officer in detail to find out what that officer's perspective was and what they were dealing with, uh, it's just more complicated. That being said, you know, the, the, the images there just on its surface, you know, from, from my standpoint, you know, that you're showing relating to this instance, which is, we're all here talking about a case, uh, obviously is, is kind of just terrible. It's har, it's harrowing. It's, it's, how, how could you allow for a dog to stay in the middle of your backyard, tethered to the ground, uh, with no access to any kind of shade? I mean, that, you are 100% correct. Igloo is no shade. I mean, we can all see that. But, um, you know, that be, that being said, I, I, I really want to see staff, you know, work on a policy, you know, to help us increase our outreach. So, you know, I'm trying to do my best to withhold judgment on the particular case because this is not a fair court to try a particular case. And the animal control officer would be put on the spot if she were here, uh, and, uh, and the fact that she's not here, there's just no way. It's a staff internally needing to take care of it. But for myself, I will say that Robin's report is very good. Your commentary about, uh, an officer's ability to look into and observe is, seems very accurate, you know, and, uh, also deterrence, you know, is something I think we need to take a stronger look at when it comes, especially in a situation where, you know, animals are outside in the heat, you know, just the same, I, I think, you know, I know the gun analogy works, but I think of like a child locked up in a car while the parent goes inside is, is a really apt, uh, analogy there too, because that, that's something that, you know, we have such a low tolerance for. And so we need to have a very similar mindset towards animals that are in unsafe conditions. But, uh, that being said, there's just, there's complicating factors to it. So I love the idea of the outreach. I love the idea of the education, but also I think, you know, you need, you need to have some clear understanding of like where does council think the line needs to be in terms of leniency, you know, for myself. And I think from what I'm hearing, uh, we would like to have a much shorter leash, um, when, especially in, when conditions outside are, are unsafe for animals. But that's not a time to be lenient as far as, as far as I can tell at least.
Yeah, I, and I do, um, one of the things that I think we talked about last week was the heat advisories and some of those things are, are different. And I think there was some misunderstanding of what kinds of, uh, you know, accommodations should be made in those kinds of circumstances. So I definitely think there's some situations where we definitely need to have a firmer hand and, and, and be willing to write some citations. But, um, I think as we mentioned before, we always want to have some discretion with the officers and the ACOs in the field that they have, they can take, look at the totality of all the different factors involved to decide whether a citation is important.
Well, and I, I can hear, I can hear Chief Hernandez in the back of my head, officer discretion because he, he does bring that up a lot and that there's always value. And if we try to tell an officer how they're supposed to behave in a situation, we, we take away their, some of their most important tools and they're the professionals in the field trying to deal with the situation. But in a Texas summer, if you have a backyard and no shade, uh, you should not leave your dog at, outside, just period. Dogs seek shade. It, you know, and it can be 105 degrees if you have a really solid shade structure. A dog can handle that. I'm from the country, dogs stay outside 24 hours a day, seven, you know, like that's something they can handle, but without shade and the ability to find shade, that's, that's, that's cruel.
We agree on that and, um, you, you know, there's, again, just some discretion at times for officers is very, very important. So we always want to have that, but I agree that there's definitely some circumstances that could have been handled, handled differently.
Councilor Heiser.
What does a training look like if you were to do a training for, uh, animal control and KPD officers? What would that, what would that look like?
Yeah, thank, thank you for asking that question. I was, I was about to mention training again, um, because I think that, um, the education is port, is important to the community and for the community. But I also think, um, one of the issues that was brought up through this case as just a, a case example, an, a case, case-specific example was the, um, the lack of knowledge of your specific ordinances and the ability and the authority of what your ACOs and even your PD can do, what discretion they do have. And so the training would provide them those tools so that they know at least what is in their toolbox and what they can use. You know, so what does the training look like? It, it really would depend on what the needs, specific needs of Kyle are. And I think that focusing on the ordinances, focusing on reasonable expectation of privacy, I would say, I mean, it can go from a one-hour training like I did during roll call for NVPD, Comal County SO and, and so on, or SAPD where I did like a four-hour training. Wilco and Travis County and Cedar Park PD, it was a four-hour training because it also incorporated family violence, um, investigations, which, I mean, your PD would have, shouldn't really, I don't think have an issue learning more about the family violence aspect and the link between family violence and animal cruelty. The LEO, the, the law enforcement would get T Cole credit. I almost just did this training in Parasol, but the Parasol ACO left and so it kind of fell apart. But, uh, and then ACOs would get their credit and if any of the prosecutors wanted to come, they could get CLE credit and we can work on that. You have a great new beautiful building and you can invite other local PDs to come in and join in the training. Um, and I have it, I have the one from Wilco ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Brian, is this something you've already discussed, uh, in that meeting last week? It's the possibility of doing training? Is that something you need direction from us in order to set up?
No, I, I actually, I think, uh, you know, the training is something I could work with Chief Barnett and Hernandez on. I definitely, big proponent of training, what that training should be, what the individual circumstances of the department are, what their needs are. I don't know that. I haven't had a chance to look at that. I think we need to have a holistic discussion with the department and what trainings have they had? That's not represented here in this, this PowerPoint and I can't speak to that. So I think we need to be able to go back internally and look at that and see how we can augment that. So I really don't have a complete answer. Again, I'm not prepared for that kind of discussion today, uh, but we can take a look at it and see what training would be appropriate.
Councilor Forcek.
I want to say, um, thank you for your presentation. I'm going to disclose that I did not know it was going to be that long, but I do appreciate, no, don't be sorry. So things that I think we, I took away from this was like communication, education and enforcement. These are things that we need to work on. You know, council member Tobias said it's important to also train the pet owner. With that said, I think that's what we do via the officer that goes out there. And so if, if they're educated and they can share that education, no one's going to get together for like a class on how to be a, you know, dog owner. People don't get together to raise kids. And so, I mean, you can, very well you can. I don't know who's going to take time out of their day. I think it's more productive to hit the issue where it, it's at. And so for me, it's important to train and to educate staff and then they can, by And so for me, it's important to train and to educate staff, and then they can, by way of, you know, the phone calls, apply that. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion for staff to work with Ms. Gonzalez to hold a legal educational training regarding animal, animal law.
My, my married last name is Gonzalez, is that what you're?
Yes, sorry.
All right. The motion is to direct staff to work with Ms. Gonzalez to put together a training. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Councilmember Heiser.
I, I just want to be clear with the council, the, the management of the staff is my exclusive responsibility of how to manage that staff. We're happy to look at training and look at opportunities to see who that should be. But I want to be very careful about having the, the council as from the day as direct me of who I should be doing training with and how. That's essentially directing me to how to manage the staff. And I'm open to looking at that, but I want to be really careful about how we do that.
Okay, well, there's no timeline. I'm just asking for you to work with her. It doesn't have to be, there's no timeframe. I just, for me, I feel like this is free education. And so if you can find another free education, that's great, but this is, you know, we don't try to micromanage. We try to find things that benefit the city. I think this is a benefit to the city. I think it's a free service. This doesn't have to be done tomorrow. You did say you need to find a holistic way to get with staff and talk to them and figure out what their needs are. That's all in due time. I just would like, I want staff to know that we are in support of having some additional free education. And if it can go on to legal education, that's great as well. I mean, that's stuff that the city pays for. So if we could get it for free, to me, I think that's a win, but completely up to council.
All right. Councilmember Ratchell.
Well, we were all in agreement when we were talking about not taking away the discretion of the officers, and I think that that should be extended to our city manager as well. You did an amazing job. I love animals, I don't even eat them, but I would love to hear what Brian suggests and brings back. I'm sorry. Our city manager suggests and brings back.
All right, there's a motion on the table. It's, it's, it's very much focused on directing Brian to do a very specific thing. So he's asking to, to have discretion to determine what training he wants. Is there a discussion on the motion?
I'd like to amend the motion. Can I amend your motion?
You can motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
What is the amendment?
You got to make it.
Okay. To kindly ask Brian to, to come back to council with a presentation of potential changes that could be made, enhancements per se, to animal control and KPD's enforcement of our city ordinance.
That's a whole new motion.
That's, that's not a good amendment, sorry. We need to vote on the original motion.
I was rolling there too. You're going to make me do that one again?
No, no, it's, there's, it's a completely separate task to have it come back, so.
This is both to be done.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right, motion fails. Two to five.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, next up is agenda item number 22, hold a discussion and request that the staff bring back a report on options to address increased panhandling and associated issues in the city of Kyle. Ms. Parsley.
Thank you. I just want to state, just in case it doesn't, like, like we don't all know, there is currently an ordinance that addresses panhandling and soliciting. And so since we have seen an increased number of solicitation in public places, I requested some information from chief, and I don't know if he sent it to everybody, but we have seen an increase in June and July. There has been repeated issues with people soliciting. One of the things that I would like to address, and again, we are not experts in here, so I will have to defer to staff to maybe take a look into this, but after speaking to some of the officers, they did raise a concern that, on, let me bring that up, sorry, in section 23 dash 335, the begging in public areas, there is a section that says begging does not include passively standing or sitting with a sign or other indication that one is seeking donations without addressing any solicitation to any specific person other than in response to an inquiry by that person. So it looks like one of the, the, you know, the, one of the persons that was soliciting money had printed and read the ordinance, so the person knew exactly what he could do. This is not a homeless person. It was a person that lives in Austin but came to Kyle to seek money and had a sign with a Venmo logo. So under our ordinance, that is not considered begging. He was playing music with a Venmo logo. So I don't know if we will need to possibly remove that specific section. If you go and look at the charter and that section I was saying, it says begging does not, it's like in the second paragraph. Begging does not include passively standing or sitting with a sign or other indication, which is what this person was doing. So I don't know if we are going to get an increase of people with a Venmo logo playing music, which it could look like it's begging because you're just doing an activity in a public place expecting to get money.
So, so you're saying that because they're not asking with their words...
There is no sign that says, hey, I'm here for donation, but there is a Venmo logo.
That's, that's a pretty creative loophole, because that sure seems like begging to me. Paige, is that, is that right? Is that a loophole?
The person, the person had the ordinance printed.
They had it printed? Wow.
Yes, they had read it.
I mean, maybe, I mean, we have to look at the...
Here comes the page answer.
Yeah, this is the page answer. I mean, it just depends on the circumstances.
So I'm not trying to make, I mean, yes, I would like to see how we can maybe close that little gap. And so because we are not experts in here, I would like to see if there is anything that staff could bring back to us to look into that possibility.
There, there is an exception for begging does not include just standing there with a sign that indicates one is seeking a donation without addressing any solicitation to specific people, so...
And I was also, you know, because I asked the question about when we see schools or any other organization that stand by the light. What I heard is that they can ask for a permit from the city, is that correct?
If we have a permit process, I need to look at that to see if there is one.
Okay.
How could, how could there be a permit process to, to do that when that's against, expressly against our ordinance?
You get, well, there's laws that are going to limit what the city can do with respect to solicitation and with some activities that could constitute begging. There, there are some limitations. So we have to stay away from those limitations when we're enacting these regulations. There's certain activity that's, that's protected under the Constitution, so we have to stay away from free speech issues when we're regulating solicitation, exercise of religious freedoms. So those are examples of regulations we've got to stay.
Not unexpected to have all the answers right now, but that's why I would like to see if staff can look into this regulations and see if maybe we can tie it up.
Yeah, City of Dallas recently got sued over some of its panhandling ordinance provisions, so we'd just like to make sure that we're reducing risk for the city with these regulations.
Absolutely.
We can certainly take a look at what some other cities have done, maybe bring you back some options to consider. We can do that.
And then there was another thing that I wanted to address, and it was if somebody is not compliant and then there is a citation or a fine, the belongings of the person, you know, if they happen to go to jail, and I don't know, maybe chief can explain the process, when they are carrying all their belongings with them, does that get put away somewhere? And then for how long? And can we make a, and again, I don't know, this, I'm just listening to recommendations given to me by a couple of officers and residents. What my understanding is those belongings will remain storage for years before our police department can get rid of them. Is that not right? I, I don't know. And so what, what I'm trying to say is, like, well, if that's the process, can we just kind of limit the time that these belongings are not being picked up after the person has left?
Good evening. Pedro Hernandez, Assistant Chief of Police for the record, mayor, council. So we try not to hold on to it for any longer than we have to. There is a state law. So we take them to jail and we have to take their property. We take it, the property that we can leave with them at the jail, we will leave with them at the jail. The property that we can't, or the jail refuses to take, we will bring back and store it in evidence in our safekeeping.
Okay.
Now, if that person never comes back to claim it, you know, we send them notice, we have an address to send notice. There's a certain timeframe, and I don't remember the, the amount of days, but then we can file for abandoned property or, you know, so. And then we have to go through a process, the judge signs off on it because nobody's come to claim it. So, but we try not to hold, maybe in past, you know, just because of staffing that we didn't have, maybe some of that stuff did sit in evidence for years. We try not to hold on to it that long.
Okay, then maybe that's not necessary.
Okay.
Councilor Heiser.
I'm going to wait until a motion potentially is put forward and then jump back in here.
I would like to make a motion to direct staff to maybe look into that paragraph about the begging does not include passively standing or sitting with a sign.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Parsley, second by the mayor. Is there a discussion on the motion? So the point is to try and close the loophole, because I think that the spirit of the rule is that if you're standing there, you know, with a Venmo sign in the right of way in the intersection where we've expressly said that that's not allowed. I mean, we just had, what, a couple of days ago, we had a, a big soccer team out there trying to raise money to go, and we're just like, no, we've made this rule and they have to leave. And so it's one of those things where it's like, if we're going to have the rule, I, I think we should need to enforce it by the spirit. So, well, Councilor Heiser. All right, Councilor Forescale.
I don't think our current ordinance allows for them to stand in a dangerous situation regardless if they're asking for money or not. So for me, I, I can't, I'm trying to understand what this loophole is because unless it's, I think it's aggressive, our ordinance says it has to be aggressively asking. I, I don't think it's, it's relevant. I think people can stand outside with a Venmo as long as it's, they can stand in, in Walmart, they can stand in all these private places, there's no law against that. Now, if you want to say, can they stand in the medium? They can't do that with or without that sign. So I guess my question is, what is it that we're trying to, what's the loophole that we're trying to close?
This, the loophole we're trying to call, sorry, close is that currently, if you have a sign that it's asking for donations, basically, you cannot do that, however.
But you can't, okay, let's be clear, you can do that at Walmart, you could do that at Target, you could do it at any private company.
If it's private property, yes.
If it's in, if it's in the, the city, though, you can't do that anywhere where it's, it's not dangerous.
This person was in the medium?
So that, okay, so the problem is not even the Venmo. The problem is they were in a dangerous situation and they should have already, they should have been asked to leave regardless. So that's two different issues. Like, do you not want them in the medium? Because they can't be there anyways. So closing this loophole is not going to fix that.
That's in the ordinance too.
Yes, it's currently in the ordinance that they can't be there, so...
I think the, the ordinance says that you can't be, you can't solicit at two specific intersections, 1626 and I-35 and Center Street.
Dangerous intersection, I believe. Did, I mean, I don't have, the problem is there was no backup, so I'm not sure what, what the, what we're trying to do here, but I, as, as of this point, it's too complicated and I can't get behind this.
For staff to look into that?
For staff to look into. I just, I don't, I, I don't understand what we're trying to do. There's a loophole and you're saying there's a Venmo and then people can stand right there with it, but they were in a medium, and so those two are two different issues. Like, the medium should have never, they should have never been there to begin with.
Well, all right, so the, the direction is to look at our, the ordinance as it relates to solicitation, where it's not allowed, is there a situation where somebody can get around it and do research on that and bring, bring back a, a proposed solution to that? So that's a, the, the motion's very good. It's not, it's not...
Not directing anything.
Certainly changing any, any, any rules, it's just looking at that as a loophole. So if somebody can, can actively beg, but then, but if they can't, I'm just, your argument made sense to me, that's all I know, is that, is so. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Nay.
All right, I, I didn't hear everybody, so we'll call that.
Nay.
Parsley?
Aye.
Zuniga?
Nay.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Heiser?
Nay.
Tobias?
Aye.
Bradshaw?
Aye.
All right, motion carries four to three. All right, one more to go. Next up, agenda item 23, consider impossible action to not open Siebel Chase and Greg Clark Park splash pads until the city's water restriction requirement is lower than stage two. Councilor Heiser.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I am asking council to consider the possibility of not opening our two new splash pads that just broke ground last week until we are lower, lower than stage two water restriction. I think the reasons for it are fairly obvious. I do have some information that Brian passed along to me, or that Mariana passed along to Brian. If we would, anyone would like more information on the amount of water that is used or the process for which, or for where the water comes from, but I am asking council that we, at least for now, put a pin in setting a date to open those splash pads until...
Do we have an estimated open date?
No.
It's not even a shift?
Yes, it was, yeah, it was fall. It was according to what I saw on the website and in a, in a Pave City Facebook post, it was fall. And Mariana said at the, at the groundbreaking at the Greg Clark Park splash pad that it would open in the fall.
Councilor Forescale.
Thank you, all right. I'm just kind of curious as to the reasoning behind this agenda item. If we're talking about conservation, I can understand that and I can appreciate it. I didn't think that we would use a splash pad after this year anyways, or at all this year. But even with that said, I think there's, there's other major water users in the city of Kyle. The Heroes Memorial uses, between June 4th and July 4th, they used 403,700 gallons of water to refill the Heroes Memorial, and then 316,800 for the, the irrigation, which I know we need. So that, that's just for a month, almost 720,000 gallons of water. So my question is, if we're trying to conserve water, are we doing it by bringing an agenda item, whereas, I think it uses like 304, 340 gallons to fill it up and then it recycles itself? So, and I, again, I don't think we're going to use it this year because it's not expected to be open until September, and I'm pretty sure nothing happens on time in the city of Kyle. So it probably not till October or November, I would think. So my overall question is going to be, are, are we trying to focus on conserving water? And if we are, what can we do besides, you know, the, the splash pad to truly conserve water?
Well, I mean, there was multiple handfuls of residents who balked at the idea that we were even going to break ground on these, given the current state of water. But if you're going to ask factually speaking, does this item reduce, create water conservation? Yes, it does. What you just chose to say, while valid, you could have brought up at any point in time had you wanted to. So if you want to talk, these two things don't have to be co-dependent. We can talk about this item as such, and if you would like to have a discussion... We can talk about this item as such, and if you would like to have a discussion at a later time about Heroes Memorial, we can. But i- if you're gonna make this a tit-for-tat situation, I'm not gonna play that game. I'm really not.
Well, I, I don't know if tit-for-tat is a difference of hundreds of thousands of gallons, but my whole point was...
Well, you just made it that way.
My point was, if we are trying to conserve water, are we really conserving water by discussing an agenda item, whereas I don't feel like it's relevant right now, because we're not even opening it up this, to my, to my knowledge, we're not opening it up. This is a groundbreaking, meaning, uh, you went and you, they're gonna start to build it, but there is no, I, I was not aware that this was gonna be open this year. Um, and then, so my automatic reaction was say, okay, where can we conserve water? And that's why I thanked you for bringing this item, 'cause I think it's important, as I've said many a times, um, that the city be conservative with its water, and so, when I, when I asked, how much water are we using in other places, and, and one was the Heroes Memorial, and I found out it was a lot, I thought, okay, well, why aren't we focusing on that as well?
That is a very fair thing for you to think. Um, but, I mean, I, I think this motion shows that we're listening to the people. You love to listen to the people, so, uh, I think that it is our responsibility to at least show them that we're, that we're listening. I know it seems inconsequential to, you know, based on what you just said, aside from thanking me, which I appreciate, uh, but I would like to make a motion to, um, to withhold announcing an opening date for these two splashpads until we are out of stage two water restriction.
Is there any way we can evaluate the situation as we get closer?
Sorry, hang, hang on, I, I thought you were gonna, second, so, I, I hang on, there's a motion on the floor to wait, to announce stage two, or to wait to, uh, announce opening the splashpad until after we're out of stage two. Is there a second? All right. Motion fails for lack of a second. Councilor Parsley.
Well, maybe I would like to make a motion to evaluate the situation or draw situation as we get closer to the opening of the splashpad, and decide then if we do want to open it this year, or we need to wait.
Second. Okay, uh, say the motion one more time.
To evaluate three weeks before the ground, the opening of the splashpad, and see if the situation allows for the water usage that we are gonna be consuming.
Okay, so you, I didn't...
Basically, I just want to, I would like to wait, withhold, and then evaluate three weeks, maybe three or four weeks before the splashpad opening, to see if we can or not do it.
All right, she added, she added the three weeks, is that okay with you?
Second.
All right, so the motion is to direct staff to...
Wait.
Wait until three weeks before the opening and, and evaluate and make a decision at that point?
Yes.
But they're gonna make the decision, or we're gonna make it? Bring it back for an agenda item?
Yes, exactly.
I, I do want to clarify, we think it's supposed to be open in September, end of September, so, uh, it'd be, very quickly, we'd be back, potentially, but if that's the, the direction of the council, we can continue to watch the water supply and, and come back to you very quickly.
I'm gonna go with that.
All right, Mayor Proten.
Let the city employees do their job, guys. Let them do their job. If they see that they're running low on water, let them make that determination, okay? We voted to get this splashpad, and now we're pulling the plug on it, because, yes, we are in a drought. But respectfully, they're building it. If they get to the point where we've been asking city manager, where's our water level? Where's our usage for all the city? We're getting those reports. Let them do their job, please, and let them make that determination.
I concur. All right. Councilor Zuniga.
Yes, so just, uh, we've had a lot of emails about the drought, the status of the water, and, Mr. Brian, you've, you've, you've notified me that we have 500, that, 500,000 gallons that we're not using as opposed to last year. So we, we're in a good condition not to panic into a stage three yet. But are we close, um, what does it look like going to the stage one? If...
To stage three, you mean?
Well, we're in stage two, but for us to fall back down to stage one, what, what, what does that look like?
I don't have the, I don't have the exact criteria for that. We could certainly look at that and, and try to get something back to you. It's possible, we've been in stage two, I believe, two years.
For two years.
So it's possible you could be in stage two all of 2024. We do have new supply coming on early 25. There's also some new supply, um, for parts of the city that's available in 24. So it's, it's a dynamic equation, it depends on the weather, it depend, it's obviously hot and dry now, but that certainly could change next year, and it could be a different environment. We are very closely monitoring it. We do believe we have adequate supplies now, we have adequate, um, distribution systems to get the water through the city. So we don't believe there's a need to go to stage three now. If we did, uh, we would be telling you to do that. Uh, but we are using less water than what we used last year, which I think is your point, sir, that we used about 500,000 gallons less per day than what we were using last year, so that's certainly helping us.
Are we building more this year? Do we, are we issuing more permits this year than last year?
Yes, we continue to have permits coming through, we continue to develop, that's correct, and we're using less water per day.
So two, two things to that equation. We're in a drought, we're still using less water, and we're building more this time of year compared to last year.
Um, but the, the usage is down, and we continue to build, yes, so...
Thank you.
Hope that helps.
Yeah, it clarifies to me where we are.
Right, right.
We need rain. We need rain. Out of mine, that's when we get to stage...
All right, we have a motion on the table to direct staff to bring back three weeks prior to opening. Is there a discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That's three to four?
Yes, sorry.
So that's, that's an a vote? Okay.
All right, motion fails three to four. Motion adjourned.
I was a a, it was four. It was four nays.
Gotcha.